vendors that provided partial awarded bids that were recommended for award and those are Southern Tire Mart, Stapleton, and Memphis Tire Recyclers, and they do all three have local retail outlets where we can acquire the tires within again, you know, one to two hours. And they're required to stock the tires that we need as well. So that's part of this bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one in the queue, let's bring this item to a vote, please. If all commissioners have had an opportunity to vote, Madam Clerk, when you're ready, please tally the votes.
We have I-votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Mills, Ford, and Wright. We have four I-votes.
Thank you. This item will come to us Monday with a favorable recommendation. That will conclude Committee for Public Works. We have about five minutes until our next committee facilities, real property and capital starts at 8:45.
Commissioners, I'm going to go ahead and get this next committee started. I think it's 8:45. So Committee 15, our chair is out, but I'll call it order. Committee 15, can we read item one, please?
Item one is a resolution approving a three-year lease agreement between Corsair Boulevard LLC and Shelby County Government on behalf of the Shelby County Fire Department for 5,113 square feet of office space located at 7740B Trinity Road, Suite 117, Cordova, Tennessee, 38018, for the term beginning July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028, with an option to extend the lease on a month-to-month basis for up to an additional three months in an amount not to exceed $94,590.50 for FY 2026, with a total contract amount not to exceed $291,441. This item requires the expenditure of FY 2026 enterprise funds in the amount of $94,590.50. Sponsored by Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr.
Thanks so much. This item has been moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Mills, I see Chief Benson, and Ms. Sykes Wood. You have the floor.
Thank you, Esther Sykes Wood, Land Bank Administrator. This lease is for the same space that the current temporary station in Cordova is currently housed. It is for three years. There is an early out after two years in case we are able to build something or find somewhere that they want to go permanently.
Chief Benson, did you have anything else to add? Commissioners, I see no one in the queue. Let's take this to a vote. If all commissioners have voted, who would like to? Let's report the tally.
We have I-votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Mills, Ford, and Wright. We have four I-votes.
Thank you. That item will move down with a favorable recommendation, and once again, we are ahead of schedule, so we'll wait until 8:55.
Two more seconds, number three. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd like to call it order. Committee number six, parliamentarian, please read it number one into the record.
Item one is a resolution aligning the elections, terms of office, and term limits of the Shelby County Board of Education with the Shelby County Board of Commissioners pursuant to TCA Section 49-2-201, sponsored by Commissioner Brittany Thornton, Chairman Michael Whaley, and Commissioner McRae.
Thank you so much, and this item was passed, was moved by Mills and seconded by myself, and we have several commissioners in the queue, but before we get started, I just want to acknowledge and welcome Representative Tori Harris. Welcome. Okay, first off, we have Commissioner Ford.
Question, is there any presentation or anything like that before I speak, Chair?
No, there's no anyone here to speak on this. Let's Representative Tori Harris like to speak on this.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, you might as well come on up to the wheel, because I'm starting to ask you, since this is your bill. And he's my state rep, too, so... Let me see if I got my votes worth.
Oh, all right.
Out of you, so my, I'm going to give a statement first, and I'm going to give a question. So I know that your bill, and I don't know who the person on the Senate side who was trying to help you with that, I know that the House and the Senate got deadlocked on particular things that were inside of your bill to where there are some that state that the outcome got watered down, and there were some things that some constituents wanted to see for the purposes of accountability. You were up there unlike us, so you got to see how things got deliberated, modified, and the end product. And because this is your bill, my question to you is twofold. One, what changes happened from your original proposal that got us to what the Assembly passed? And number two, what would you like to see this body do besides pass this item, I'm assuming?
Thank you so much, and to the commission, I appreciate you all for giving me the opportunity to speak on this. This is a very important...
And excuse me, always state your name and position for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Tori Harris and State Representative, House District 91. So with this piece of legislation, the only thing that got modified, the original language is still the same. The only thing that changed was the initial language would allow for any school board member who was currently in the term that they were in to be able to continue that term out. I took that piece out of it, and then I took it out after it passed on the House side. So on the Senate side, we had to put an amendment on there, and that amendment passed, so that way it would make sure that any individual, this would actually start this year into next year's election, so that way it would put them on the same cycle rather than waiting another four years down the line. So we would go ahead and get this started. So that's the only adjustment that took place with this piece of legislation that actually passed.
Thank you, and I just want to say this, and so I understand we're putting all the school board members on the same cycle, and I'm understanding this will also save as far as the elections, because when you have, you know, a few people, half of the school board members running during a time where there's low voter turnout, it also costs taxpayers around $3 million, so I just want to put that out there on the record. Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, and Representative Harris, thank you for bringing, for getting the bill passed. I think it was you and Senator Taylor were the Senate and House sponsors.
That's correct.
And we spoke about this, I was in Nashville quite a bit this session, and we spoke on this, and I appreciate you bringing this. To one of the original sponsors, I would ask to be added, if you don't mind, as a sponsor.
And can we do that without objection? So moved.
Thank you. I just want to thank you, listening, this is legislation at the state level where you listened to the people, you did and worked within what you could to listen to them and make some changes, and this is going to be, this is on the voters. You asked for this, you were heard, you're heard at the state level, at the county level, so if and when this passes, it will be on the people to do your homework. Don't just go vote for your friends, your family members, your fraternity, sorority sisters, or whatever. Put the person in there that will do the work and do the job, and hopefully, this will be a game changer, and people will do that. So thank you for doing what you do at the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brooks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move a substitute motion, would you pass it out, to the floor? It's being passed out now.
We need a second.
Is there a second?
I don't know what to do.
Can I move this down? We don't have enough members here right now.
Okay, so we're withdrawing, are you moving to the...
And move it to the Hill.
Okay. Do you have a second?
To, to move it?
Okay, are you withdrawing your motion?
Withdraw it and move it to the Hill.
Okay, that's fine.
I got a point of information.
Okay, Commissioner Ford.
Somebody's got to turn the mic off.
All right, thank you. If we're moving an item to the Hill, and this is a substitute, are we saying now that this is a separate resolution, or is the purpose for this item to be substituted and we discuss this at the Hill? To the parliamentarian, through the chair.
I think too many people left there.
I think that she just would like to have some others in the room before this item is entertained, so she asked to withdraw her motion to move the substitute, and then she made a motion to move this item to the Hill, I believe, of the committee. And so I guess if there's a second, if it's properly seconded and done without objection, then you can take on the next item.
Okay, so for clarity, if that's the case, don't leave. It sounds like the will is to do item two, dispose of that, and then come back and discuss one for the purposes of properly bringing this back up, and to give us a chance to see what has been put in front of us for the first time.
That sounds good to me.
If that is the intent, I'll second that for the purposes of disposing two and to come back to one and to have time to read this.
Okay.
Thank you.
And do we have objection? Okay, so you're not, so moved, and so we'll move this to the Hill, and so we're going to go on to the discussion item. Parliamentarian, please read item number two into the record.
Item two is a discussion item to last approximately 10 minutes. Shelby County Youth Council update. Reggie Eskridge, Youth Engagement Coordinator for Bridges presenting.
Okay, and when you are ready, you all may begin. State your name, not just for the record, or the name of the organization for the record.
Mark Williams, 918 East Demter Avenue, Shelby County Youth Council Representative for District 10.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Shakira Braden. I am District 1 Representative, and going into my third year on the Shelby County Youth Council.
Hello, okay, here it is. Hello, I'm Carrington Oliver. For the past two years, I had the great opportunity to serve as District 1 Representative for the Shelby County Youth Council.
Hello, Commission, thank you for having us. My name is Asia Alexander, and for the last four years, I've had the privilege of serving as the Adult Advisor to the Shelby County Youth Council.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Reggie Eskridge. I'm the Youth Engagement Coordinator for the Shelby County Youth Council at Bridges. And today, we're here to report back on our recent work that we've accomplished this past year, share our recommendations that came out of our 2024-2025 Youth Voice Summit, as well as to share with you our upcoming plans for this 2025-2026 school year, and we also want to ask for your continued support for the Shelby County Youth Council and further collaboration to advance the goals and the mission of the Shelby County Youth Council.
The Shelby County Youth Council exists to build a stronger connection between youth and their local government through equitable intergenerational partnership. We live by making sure youth are empowered by nothing about us without us. Serving in our mission requires us to connect to all of y'all and more. During the Youth Voice Summit, you all made your presence very apparent, and we thank you for that, and this year, we saw an impact like no other. I also want to thank you all for starting the District Connector Program, because through this, we have been able to meet with you more intimately and timely, as well as be connected to spectacular change makers like Sandy Bromley and Ariel Gibson, in order to garner more support for our initiatives, which we'll talk about later. But in all my years supporting this council, we have never strayed from amplifying youth voice across districts and aiming to influence policies that directly impact young people. We've only built upon it.
In the past years, we have used digital surveys to identify key issues that youth from each district has named, and out of those surveys birthed the 2023-2024 Youth Voice Summit, which highlighted the following four concerns, starting off with mental health, public safety, education, and the need for more youth programs.
This year, we hosted the Youth Voice Summit with over 250 youth attendants and 15 elected officials and community leaders and attendants. We facilitated small group discussions on mental health, violence and public safety, education, youth engagement activities. I was on the news for the Youth Voice Summit, and from my experience, it was phenomenal and inspiring. Raise your hands if you were at the Youth Voice Summit. For all the people who weren't, here's a video that shows the energy of what happened at the Youth Voice Summit. The video shows how inspiring and powerful it was. Here's all the recommendations on the, from the youth at the Youth Voice Summit. Number one, mental health. Normalize reset rooms, yeah, normalize reset rooms across Shelby County, yeah, Shelby County. Two, more social workers and school counselors, more advertisement and outreach to youth about mental health resources. Youth, youth, oh my God. Two, violence and public safety, conflict resolution programs in schools, safer public spaces, after-school programs, youth-led meetings about community safety.
Number three, education. So with the county being one of the top funders of education for MSCS, we can agree that education is one of the top issues of the commission, as well as SEYC. So we believe that adding restorative justice training for educators, a more inclusive curriculum, better access to schools' technology, work with curriculum, and better access to schools' technology can enhance the quality of education and ensure that our youth have successful futures. Now, four, youth engagement. Unfortunately, as we've seen plenty of times, it's low in this county, as you can see within your own districts. To counter this, we ask for more recreation centers open after hours, we ask for county-funded youth internships, as well as youth advisory boards in each district to help give a platform to other youth. These recommendations or more are in the one recommendation one page that will be passed out. We share the one-page recommendations through events for engagement for spreading information, and we call them "Pack the House" events. Here is the clip showing these events and how SEYC was engaged with the community.
And while the clip is going to be shown in the background, I can discuss a little bit about what this upcoming year's plan for the Shelby County Youth Council. So this year, we're taking a different approach compared to doing digital surveys. This year, we're going to focus on actually building relationships. We're going to use a method called...
going to focus on actually building relationships. We're going to use a method called deep canvassing, where youth, they're a part of the council, we'll be engaging with youth through one-on-one conversations throughout the year. So the purpose of these conversations is to, one, gather detailed insight on mental health experiences that youth experience throughout the county, as well as to share what we're going to call a youth mental health bill of rights. One of the recommendations that came out of the Youth Voice Summit was that youth are unaware about what their rights are to mental health, as well as what resources are available. And so part of this campaign is going to be able to educate youth about what resources are going to be available. Additionally, we're also going to be distributing resources from the Youth and Family Resource Center. Our goal is for the Youth Council this year is for Youth Council members, since there's going to be about a total of 26 of us, to directly connect with 10 youth per month, to build relationships, to build trust, to educate youth about mental health, as well as collect actionable feedback on what the youth want to have done to address youth mental health.
And we have already begun this work. Next week, our Student Institute happens, where we'll finalize these plannings beyond the interns, the youth interns that we had this summer. And from September to October, that deep canvassing will begin. November to December, we'll do a lot of data analysis and prep for the Youth Voice Summit. From January to February, we plan to publish our new Youth Voice Report and host the summit. And then from March to April, our advocacy campaigns will begin before the commission and the school board. We have the intention of changing our meeting date from Wednesdays to Mondays, so we have already been talking to Sandy Bromley about coming to the commission meetings at least once a month. So expect much more youth engagement, because they have a lot to say. And we are currently still finalizing the strategic plan, and we welcome all of your input.
Please continue investing in the Shelby County Youth Council so we can implement our campaign and expand impact.
Yes, we are thankful for all you give, and hopefully, we'll continue to give. But this year, we have some shifts in our adult team. I originally served for free through my Bonner Scholarship at Rhodes College, but I graduated this past spring, so I will no longer be working in this capacity. And Reggie needs the help to get this work done. We also had someone serving through AmeriCorps, but due to our change in administration, Bridges no longer has this funding. So to bridge this gap, it would be invaluable for you all to offer enough extra funding to be able to support a new youth advisor for about 10 hours a week, as I served previously.
Please support us, please support us in identifying students from your districts and serve on the council. Thank you to Commissioner Thornton, as she helped us with recruiting.
That leads me to my, another ask of us, which is collaboration. Collaboration is one of the key pieces of this entire pie that allows us to do what we do and help you guys as commissioners. We seek a mutualistic relationship between SEYC, the Board of Commissioners, and the District Connectors in order to not only help each other, but to contribute to the overall goal of youth mental health. To do this, we would like to schedule one-on-one meetings between council, youth, and commissioners. We would also like for the commission to assist in promoting youth mental health resources to schools and community centers. We believe that with the combined power of the commission, youth council, and district connectors, that we can better help youth mental health in our community. We'd also like to invite the Board of Commissioners to institute at Bridges. The dates are from 7/28 through 7/31, 10 a.m. to 7 p.m. If you want more info, email our Youth Adult Advisor, Reggie Eskridge, at R E S K R I D G E at bridges.usa.org.
And as we close, we want to say thank you for the opportunity to share the meaningful work we've been part of through SEYC. It has been an honor to advocate, serve, and grow as leaders in our communities. And personally, this work has been incredibly impactful for me as someone who has just graduated and is heading to college. The lessons I've learned, the connections we've built, and the passion we've poured into these committees, as you can see from the videos, will definitely stay with me forever. We are hopeful for what the future holds and look forward to continuing this work directly with you in new and powerful ways. Thank you again for your time, your support, and your belief in the power of youth voice in Shelby County.
Thank you so much. And so I appreciate the work that you all put in, and understand that you stated that there is an ask, a dollar amount. Have you all come up with the amount that is needed to bridge the gap that's lacking from Bridges? If not, you all can send an email with a request later on, okay? As I put that out there. We have a couple commissioners in the queue. Commissioner Ford?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for your presentation. I got two questions. One, who has all the information regarding the multitude of requests? Because I know that you stated some requests, you stated some requests. Is there one white paper that has all the requests collectively? And I'm assuming you were trying to raise your hand, so are you the one that is the custodian of all of the requests collectively?
No, sir. Our Adult Advisor, Erskine Hetrick, he's the one that-
Go and give your name and whatnot.
Oh, sorry. Mark Williams, Representative for District 10. Reggie Eskridge, our Adult Advisor. Usually, our Adult Advisors have all the information.
All right. Can she send all 13 of us, the collective? Because what I would like to do, and I can't promise anything, but there's a lot of things that I will support. There are a few things that I'm not going to be able to support, but if seven people decide they want to otherwise, then so be it. But I think that what we could do as a startup is look at all of your requests, at least have at minimum a resolution saying that we will consider those requests, since we just started a fiscal year, and let's just see where we land. And you can keep us accountable these next 12 months to see where we're at, so that whoever's still on the Youth Council, or new members of the Youth Council, can say, all right, you presented on July the 23rd, let the gauge be June 30th of next year to see what has transpired, and we go from there. So if you can send it to all 13, that'd be great. And I would like to, at least for the first meeting in September, bring a resolution for the consideration of the items. Not putting a fiscal note on anything right now, because we just finished our fiscal year budget, and we need time to make sure that everything is in order. So as soon as you send that, we can start working on that in September, and we can just go from there. And thank you again for your presentation. Now, you're back.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Thanks so much, Madam Chair. And so thank you all for your presentation. I know that you're getting used to it, but it's not always comfortable for young people to come in a setting like this and speak to people who are moving around and maybe checking papers and so forth. So you've just always shown a lot of poise, and so I compliment you on your presentation and for your participation in this program. I would like to ask, because this is something that we've heard probably every year I've been here, the Youth Council has elevated mental health as an issue, and that's something that you spoke to today. I'm just curious, since we keep hearing that, there's got to be something to it that you're all picking up on. Would one of you, or maybe a couple of you, mind sharing? I'm just curious, could you be a little more specific about what are the particular concerns or scenarios that you see happening in the student body? And what particular kind of supports do you see as being needed or helpful?
So I can speak to some of that. So currently, Shakira and another SEYC member, we've been working on a strategic plan. What's been noted is that outside of MSES, a lot of schools do not have reset rooms. And so there's been research done, in fact, we have included in our strategic plan about the benefit of reset rooms. It's just through a bit of research, it's found that not all schools outside of the district have those resources. And additionally, I would also defer to the expertise of Kathy and Cachet, working within the Youth and Family Resource Center, for they've also been talking with youth. So the Youth and Family Resource Center also offers mental health therapy sessions. However, a lot of times, youth have reported that they would not like to have those conducted in schools, and so just trying to find ways to make it more accessible. Additionally, from our Youth Voice Summit, youth have stated that they're unaware of what currently is available. And so part of what we're trying to do is, in addition to identify and name actionable things that youth want to have done, we're also going to try to share information, share knowledge about what is currently available.
I guess, and Madam Chair, if I could continue, I'm not sure if they started my time or not, but I guess I'm more curious, maybe what some of the drivers are. I don't want to pry or anything like that, but I'm just sort of curious what you all are feeling or dealing with. One of the things that we learned recently, we received a report from the Health Department that shared with us some of the issues that are in each of our districts. In my district, the district that I represent, they identified that we have the highest suicide rate of all the districts in Shelby County. And so I'm trying to understand better, what are some of the drivers? You know, is it community violence that you're feeling? Are you, you know, are you experiencing loss? Or is it, you know, is there increased stress in the schools? I'm just, I'd just like to hear a little bit more flavor of what your experience is.
I can definitely speak from personal experience for District 4. This past year, we did deep canvassing as well, and also we had time to speak with those in our community at the Youth Voice Summit. And they had the option to choose through multiple topics, solutions, as were listed, like education, public health, and they were split into different groups, like in District 4 room, and everybody wanted to do mental health. And although this year, we didn't put all District 4 in one room, we split it up, like across the board, across districts. Even though they were from different districts, they all had the same foundation that mental health was really bothering them. And a lot of them, as you were saying, getting to the more specifics, it was more either suicidal thoughts, their environments at home, the stress of school, and things like that. And so from that birthed a lot of different ideas, from just websites online, or having more counselors in the school, or just changes in the environment of the school, which I know, like, we're not able to do that. But just moving resources outside of the school base, but having more resources just in the community as a whole.
Thank you. I would just like to add about the report. Since we're focused on mental health, we're wondering if we could maybe get a copy of that report as well, detailing with mental health overall within the County Health Department. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'll just say, while our chair is tied up for a second, that report is online, so that's something we can share with you from the Health Department. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Caswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all again for your service. I was listening to you as I was in the back coming forward, and I appreciate everything that you all have done throughout the year, again, to build capacity. I was just wondering, my first question, because I was leaving one of my schools this morning, providing training to their counselors around trauma and how they work with children in the schools. I got four more schools to do during this professional development week for teachers as they get ready to go back to school. And so I'm glad that these schools are really taking that serious, when they understand how do we interact with students that are acting out and maybe having trauma at home, but it's coming to the school at the same rate. I was just wondering, did you all have an opportunity to watch the budget process this year for the county commission?
I watched it very loosely, but I heard there was a budget reduction from last year, I think?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, because I heard some of y'all items that y'all are talking about, mental health and other things that y'all were fighting for. And I say, as you begin to advocate and push, that you, we be more strategic in working with those communities, the youth getting them here, because we, I heard you in the summit, some of the things that you all, that was being said for the investments to be made. When we talk about many of our municipalities, they increase their revenue to invest in their community because they see those needs. But in our inner-city, we haven't, we're not going to see those increases. As a matter of fact, we're going to see some things taken away. To that point, when we talk about how do we address our youth in inner-city communities that are seeing toxic environments every day, shootings every day, but we have nothing as a county to invest into that for youth, I was just wondering, your hope level for this county as young people? How do you, how much hope do you feel for, as a young person in Shelby County?
I feel a lot of hope in Shelby County because of the work that SEYC put in every single day with working with youth, learning experiences, just trying to implement of what they want. So my hope is going towards the next generation after us, because, well, we still work in the process of working out resolutions, but however, we are working our hardest to make sure those resolutions are implemented.
Personally, I feel that we do have a lot of hope for the county.
Again, please state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Mark Williams. I feel that we do have a lot of hope for the county, especially that trajectory that we've been heading towards and especially working with y'all as commissioners, the board. We feel that, you know, it may be that, it may be some slack with other forms of government, that may be, because you're doing, I think we were doing, y'all are doing the best that y'all can so far.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure. I'm sorry, the young lady had one.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, no, no. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to add on, Asia Alexander for the record. And I think that the Youth Voice Summit really shows that if young people are given the opportunity to all be in a place where they can talk about something like this, that they will be engaged and that they want to be engaged. At the same time, it's kind of about like the principle of Bridges, nothing about us without us, and making sure that we have equitable intergenerational partnerships. I think that young people often feel less than human. It's dehumanizing, and they feel more like a responsibility to be taken care of. But when we work in collaboration with them, I think that the hope is evident.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I just want to say for the record, I am a 12th grade teacher at White Station High School, 26 years, going 27. And I just want to say that I am so glad that you're lifting up the voices of your colleagues, okay, because it's so important. A lot of times, I'm trying to encourage, you know, young people to come out and speak, because you're the ones being impacted. You're the ones in the classroom, so we need to hear from you all. And so continue to speak out, but also encourage a lot of your classmates to do the same thing. So thank you so much. Okay, Parliamentarian, please go to Item Number 1. Please read Item Number 1 into the record.
Yes, ma'am. Item 1, Resolution Aligning the Elections, Terms of Office, and Term Limits of the Shelby County Board of Education with the Shelby County Board of Commissioners pursuant to TCA Section 49-2-201, sponsored by Commissioner Brittany Thornton, Chairman Michael Willey, and Commissioner McRight. This item was moved by Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. Commissioner Mills was properly added as a sponsor. The item was moved to the Hill by Commissioner Brooks and seconded by Commissioner Ford without objection.
And thank you so much. And so I'm going to go to a speaker before I go to the commissioners. We have a Charles Lampkin. Please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record.
Tori here, State Representative, House District 91, 1835 Union Avenue.
Okay, State Representative, I apologize. Charles Lampkin.
Oh, okay.
Yes, but you stay there. Okay. Please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. Okay, please turn your mic on. And also, it's two minutes.
Charles Lampkin, 3711 Austin P Highway, Memphis, Tennessee, 38128. Good morning, Commissioners. I've had the pleasure of sitting next to this young man here, who is a hard, diligent, competent, capable, competent representative, and worked alongside with, excuse me, some of his legal aides up there on the Hill to get this legislation passed. Our governor signed this bill into law on the 25th of May this year. This is a necessary piece of legislation. We need this resolution here in Memphis Shelby County. Our school board, everybody has an opinion of it. So if I can't say anything good, we won't say anything at all. won't say anything at all. We need to put some governance, we need to put some structure on this school board. This is the only body that don't even have ethics. They govern themselves, they just, there's just a lot of issues there that need to be right-sized. We have two election cycles, and we're wasting a lot of money, a lot of state money, a lot of, we just are not getting things done correctly. Putting everything into one election cycle, you're going to get a better turnout, you're going to do better with state money, things of that nature, and you will, at that point, I think you will have a more equitable outcome with that. Have everybody on the same sheet of music, the same verse. I implore you to please get this resolution together and get us a positive vote so that we can do better for our children and not have people growing old when they are serving on multiple terms for 13, 14, 15 years. This is the right thing for our children. Please, 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 do what we have to do and make it right for our children. Thank you for your time, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Lampkin. Okay, now I'm going to go.
Point of personal privilege.
Okay, yes.
Before we discuss item one, can the chair entertain the sponsor of the substitute resolution, bringing it, discussing the changes prior to State Representative Harris speaking, because he did not have a copy, I wanted to make sure he had a copy. So just in the interest of fairness, can we go into the queue and have the sponsor of the substitute resolution bring it, discuss it, juxtapose the differences, and then have the state rep? Can we do that? Thank you.
Yes, we can. So then we're going to have Commissioner Brooks to, since she's the sponsor of the substitute, but first she has to move it in for discussion, is that correct, Parliamentarian? Or just can we?
I think she's not going to bring it today.
Commissioner Brooks?
You are? Okay.
Yeah, I have a second. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, committee, for your patience. What I'd like to do at this point, for the record, is just substitute resolution implementing term limits in a different manner.
A second.
Okay. Okay, my mic's on. Okay, again, if you all can, turn your mics off, okay? So it has been moved by Commissioner Brooks, seconded by Commissioner Caswell. Do I have an objection? Okay?
Objection.
It's been objected by Commissioner Wright. Now can we open up for discussion? Now, having said that, I would like also, before we discuss it, to, I wish the Attorney Smith can, or the sponsor can talk about the difference between the substitute and the, the original resolution. So either the sponsor or Attorney Smith.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I will just say a couple of things, because I'm real sensitive to this issue. I think this is important, and I believe there's not a lot of differences. However, one of the things I do want to point out is that this resolution that I'm bringing, it's also involving term limits. But what I've been careful to do is not to void the votes of voters who previously cast votes. In addition to that, this term limits resolution that I'm bringing will ensure that leaderships remains responsive and reflective of the community. In addition, the resolution that we're bringing does not pose a constitutional question. There's a section in the Constitution, Tennessee Constitution, I think section, Article 11, rather, section nine, that says you cannot abridge the terms of various members. So the previous resolution that's been introduced does that. So that poses a constitutional question. The resolution that I have before you does not abridge the terms. It does require consecutive, two consecutive four-year terms, same as the one that's been introduced. However, it's a different formula. It maintains institutional knowledge, it does not leave the board, staff, and the community without that institutional knowledge, but it still accomplishes what we're trying to do, which is make sure that we change the terms, or term limit, if you will, school board members.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ford?
I just said ah.
I'm fine with, if Commissioner Brooks needs a little bit more time, I'll wait so that she can finish.
I hadn't finished, I just said ah.
Okay, time was all out, so we'll have to get back into the queue?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brooks?
Just lastly, let me just say that what we're trying to do, and what we think this resolution does, it will serve Shelby County better, in my view, and some of the view of those that I'm working with, because we're maintaining our sovereignty. We're not giving away, if you will, our power to the state. And we all know that once you open a door, we have experienced, historical and present, you open the door to the state, it come in the door, go in one room, and they're all over your house. And we also understand that the words that we've heard regarding the state who wants to come in and do better by our children are words, there has never, there has never, and I'm old enough to say that, been action that exemplifies that. So when I say that I'm sensitive to this, let me let you understand, I'm 76 years old, there was a time when I was not, I did not have the right to vote. And there are individuals who have voted for some of these members that we're talking about now, who didn't have the right to vote. So can you imagine the confusion, the apathy that could arise with the first resolution? Just facts. So what we can do is just maintain less confusion with this, achieve the same goals with a different formula, and then maintain institutional, institutional knowledge. And then also as well, not give away the sovereignty of Shelby County and Shelby County voters. Thank you, Madam Chair. I will defer to Attorney Smith.
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, I don't have anything to add unless there are questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you. And I'll be asking you a question in a second after I said stuff. And you know, Mr. Lampkin, I'm glad you're here, because you heard particular things. You heard we don't want to take away the will of the voters. Well, you know what? Didn't some of these commissioners not too long ago want to do exactly that? And didn't you and others and other constituents come down and say, how dare you all try to take away the will of the voters over personal stuff? So you know, it's interesting that it's said in one breath, but then when things change, it's said in another breath. And I hope that you and the others, and y'all have been paying attention, to where it's just interesting. And I find it when individuals, and I'm not just necessarily saying people that are in this room or whatever the case may be, but when individuals say one thing, but it's not consistent, I'd rather you be consistent, and I'm on opposite sides with you, at least you're consistent. You know, Malcolm X said, "I have more respect for a man that lets me know where he stands, even if he's wrong, than the one that comes up like an angel and is nothing but a devil." I looked at the resolution, and I wanted to make sure that State Representative Tori Harris had a copy of it, because since this was brand new, that means you didn't have it, I wanted to make sure that you had it. And my question to the representative is, the rest, the substitute resolution that's in front of us right now for the purposes of discussion, are there any conflicts with the aforementioned state law that was brought up multiple times? I had to say what I need to say at first, as far as we want to protect the voters? No. Some people want to protect the voters when it's beneficial for them. But my question on the item that's in front of us, the substitute resolution, can you articulate any conflicts that you see will arise with the changes that are brought in front of us right now? Through the chair, to the state rep.
State your name and position for the record, and you may speak.
Thank you, Chair, thank committee. Tori here is State Representative, House District 91. So as the current law currently stands, even if my law had not passed, the current law actually passed during the first year of Commissioner Brooks' first year in the Tennessee General Assembly. State's TCA 492201, county and municipal boards of education, board members serve four-year terms and may succeed themselves. To initiate staggered terms, so again, this is the first year the staggered terms were starting in 1992. To initiate staggered terms, the first election required members from even-numbered districts get two-year terms, members from odd-numbered districts receive four-year terms, so that every other election after that, they would be staggered. If that was the case, if we were following the current law, that would mean that last year's elections would have been District 2, 4, 6, 8, and that would have been all of them. However, Districts 1, 6, 8, and 9 were the districts that were elected on last year, so we were already in violation of the current law. I'm correcting the current law to make, put us back on track. Current law right now is in violation, so this, the substitute resolution would still violate our current law, even to avoid the one that I have put in place, which supersedes any other previous laws now.
My 40 seconds got taken away, and I think he took 30, so 10 seconds real quick, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Thank you. With that being said, with what we have, what we had in front of us, I would be more inclined to support what was brought in front of us in contrast to what the substitute is. So as is, I would not be supporting the substitute because of what the state rep just articulated. Thank you.
Thank you, and this is your third time in the queue, Commissioner Brooks?
I would like to hear from Attorney Smith in reference to, since she prepared this, and I believe that the attorney would prepare, well, I'd like to hear from her regarding the violation that you just brought up. Thank you.
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, I welcome a conversation about the specific citation that you're looking at. This appears to be in an effort to use the newly adopted law to implement term limits, and does allow that staggered implementation, so as to not interfere with voting rights. So to the extent that there's, there's something you'd like to show me, I'm happy to take a look at it, but I am operating under the newly adopted law for implementation of term limits.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
All right, thank you. With that, having said that, I'm trying to understand, if we cannot get a clear reading from our attorney, and I don't see it myself, and of course, I'm not an attorney, then I don't really believe that we can move forward on the basis of a violation, a state law, until we have a ruling from the county attorney on there, and that's what I'm going to seek.
State Representative?
Yes, thank you. Tori here is State Representative, House District 91. So that is, the attorney is actually correct. So in the current law, this would be, this would not be okay. In the old law, this would not be okay. Current law, the way it's written, you could probably do something different, but the previous law that was already in place in 1992, this violates that alone, because it still includes, it's, what I'm reading says in 2020.
But we're not operating on 1992. We're operating on 25.
Correct. Right, so this would be void, completely void, from what you're asking for, because it does not match up with the current law that I've written and passed would actually say.
Okay, under House Bill, well, let's just say Public Chapter 527, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, so I, can you point out the specific violation, because I'm reading it here, and I don't see it. Be specific. I have it right in front of me.
State Representative?
Thank you, Chair. Tori here is State Representative, House District 91. Current law now says not extending another law to the contrary, which means that it avoids all of the previous laws. A local legislative body for a county that has adopted a charter from a government may require elections for the county board elections to be held at the same time and on the same election cycle as the elections for members of the local legislative body for the county. If that be so, then District 1, 6, 8, and 9 could not be done next year, because districts, commissioned districts 1, 6, 8, and 9 are all up for election on next year. So we have, if we're going to align them, 1, 6, 8, and 9 can't be held off for a few years, because we're putting them in alignment with the rest of the county body.
Okay, let me just say this, we have a different formula, we're operating under a different law. And under Section F, it does say, what you said, but it says "may" require, and we are aligning them under, using a different formula. So I clearly do not see the issue.
Commissioner Brooks, you're out of time. Chair Whaley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to try to clarify what I think, what I'm hearing from Representative Harris is that the, the new law that was recently passed did two things. One is align the elections with the county legislative body, so it's been the same election cycle, and then institute term limits. So it's, there's two components of that law. That law only takes effect if the county legislative body adopts it. It does not, to my understanding, contain a provision that would allow the county legislative body to pick and choose which parts of the law to implement. So the choice is either to say yes or no to those two things, like yes to term limits and yes to having the elections the same as the county legislative body, or no to both of those things. If we say no, then we would, in my understanding, revert back to the earlier law, which you mentioned in the 1990s, in which case, that one spells out which district numbers should be elected and which years, in which this would still violate. So if that's the case, so for example, if we voted no on the original item, we would still be in violation, that would likely have to be corrected at the state level, because I'm not aware of anything the county could do to otherwise change, to keep staggered terms, but change which ones are elected when. I think that, my understanding is that would require state action, but just want to make sure we have confirmation of the situation, that either we adopt it as it's written, which has two components, or we say no. And if we say no, we revert back to the status quo, which we now understand is still in violation of the initial law from the 1996.
Two.
So I don't know, Attorney Smith, if you, if you want to weigh in on that, but that's, that's my understanding. I mean, it's that, the state law, as I've read it, does not lay out that the county legislative body can adopt certain subsections of the law.
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, I'm happy to have a conversation about the interpretation that, that I came to. I recommend that be off, off-record with the chairman.
Okay, and so I'm going to call the question, because.
Madam Chair, I'd like to suspend the rules.
Commissioner Brooks, you've had four times.
Suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay. Final time?
Turn the mic off, please. We currently have a motion on the floor, and that is a motion to substitute the item, and we have an objection by Commissioner Wright. So that is what is before us, and we need to dispose of that item.
And Parliamentarian, I've called a question.
Called a question, I asked to suspend the rules, and you didn't recognize me, and it was second.
Commissioner Brook? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, ma'am.
We can only entertain one motion at a time?
Okay.
So, and I don't know what, what we were suspending the rules on either.
So that I could speak again?
Oh, to speak?
Yes, ma'am. My First Amendment right. Is that part of the rules to suspend the rules, get additional time? If it's not, I just need to be advised.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
So, but I do think if you want to have another opportunity to speak, then the committee chair can take up.
Okay.
I didn't know what you were suspending the rules on.
Just to speak.
Okay. Now I'll call the question. I will allow a fourth and final time for you to speak.
So, thank you, Madam Chair and members. We just wanted to make sure that what we brought is not an intentional violation of everything, of any previous law of the state of Tennessee or anything else. What we're trying to do with the help of the county attorney is to ensure that we bring forth an option, not a nuclear option, for aligning school board terms. And we did that under a different formula. And I didn't see anywhere in this law, Public Chapter, that we're all referring to, that the, who's one of the sponsors sitting here, Public Chapter 527, there's no mandatory anything. It says "may", and we covered that. So when it says "may," then you have options. I am thoroughly, thoroughly not, not convinced that allowing a different formula, but still aligning, aligning the terms in a different way is, is a violation. They are aligned, but they are not aligned the way that you want them aligned. And I'm maintaining the sovereignty of Shelby County government, protecting, if you will, not voiding the votes of individuals, some of whom who, who are very sensitive to having the right to vote. So again, I'd like to hear, I'd like to entertain additional conversation with our county attorney in reference to this violation. Thank you.
Okay. Parliamentarian, would you please remind us what a yes vote represents and no vote represents? So we can bring this item to a vote.
Just a minute. Were you speaking to me, Madam Chair?
I was speaking to the parliamentarian.
Oh, excuse me.
Parliamentarian, please remind the listening audience as well as my colleagues what a yes vote indicates and a no vote indicates on the substitute.
Okay. Since it, there was an objection, it's going to a vote. And so a yes vote for the substitute would then substitute the item that would go before full committee for resolution. And a no vote would mean that it would not be the substitute, that would be the item that is currently before you.
Thank you. Let's prepare the screen for a vote.
If I could.
Commissioner Brooks, did you say you wanted, they're voting, they're voting on it now?
Okay, that's fine, ma'am. Don't worry about it. It's good.
Wright, and Chairman Whaley have voted no. Commissioner Caswell has abstained. We have one aye, five abstain, I'm sorry, five noes and one abstained.
Thank you. This substitute fails. Let's go back to the original version, the resolution. Parliamentarian, please read item number one into the record. Okay. Before we go on, state representative, do you have any comments you want to make about the original resolution before I go to the queue?
Thank you, Chair. Tori Harris, State Representative, House District 91. After seeing the back and forth, I could see why the commissioner would provide a substitute resolution. And so I will just say that based on the 2022 elections, school board District 1 had a total of 10,850 votes. School Board District 6 had 11,605. District 8 had 9,527. District 9 had 8,208. When you put a part of your school board on an election cycle where there's no one else on the ballot, you get turnout like School Board District 2, 4,667. School Board District 3, 4,744. School Board District 4, 5,938. School Board District 5, 6,042. School Board District 7, 3,807. Very, very low turnout. This is to increase voter turnout, to put us in compliance with what previous law was technically, and to make sure that individuals don't have an opportunity to make an impact on our child's lives from kindergarten all the way past the time that they graduate. And with that, I hope that you all vote in the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Harris. Commissioner Ford?
I pass. That's all I needed to hear. I yield.
Commissioner Wright?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to take a moment to, first of all, to thank you for carrying this legislation. It is not real, real frequent that we see on, on these high-profile issues, a lot of bipartisan support. But on this, on this piece of legislation that you carried and sponsored, you also had co-sponsors from Shelby County, including Hardaway, Miller, Chisholm, and Towns, along with White and Gillespie. And so you had lots of local sponsors. And this passed with a overwhelming margin at the state level. It's, it's a pleasure to see bipartisan support here on this board as well. And this is an issue that we all care about. We want our school system to be running very well and for it to, to represent the voters. So again, just thank you for carrying this and for the work that you did to get it, get us to this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Representative Harris, do you have something to say?
Thank you, Chair. And to Commissioner Wright, I appreciate you for saying that. I serve a large district, but I serve all of Memphis and Shelby County. And I will say that a large amount of individuals came to us with this legislation. I don't always agree with everything everybody brings us for me to represent, but I'm the representative, so I have to bring it. And if that's what they want, that's what they want. And so that's what they're going to get. And I hope that you all support that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright, read through. Okay. Thank you so much. Seeing no other commissioners in the queue, let's take this item down for a vote.
Okay. May I have a tally? We have aye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, and Chairman Whaley. Commissioner Brooks has voted no. Commissioner Caswell has, has abstained. We have five ayes, one no, one abstained.
This item goes down with a favorable recommendation. And this concludes Committee Number Six.
All right. I'll go ahead and call the order. Committee Number One, Budget and Finance. Madam Parliamentarian, please read item number one.
Item one is a resolution received and filing, the May 2025 Monthly Comprehensive Financial Update Reports entitled Shelby County Government Monthly Commission Division Reports for the Year Ending June 30, 2025, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs.
All right. Thank you. If we can get a mover and second on item one, moved by Commissioner Sugarman, seconded by Commissioner Ford. All right. Thank you. All right. Good morning, Director Schombach.
Good morning. Danielle Schombach, Deputy Director, Administration and Finance. You have before you the May General Fund operating statement. As you know, we are now in July, so we are working on closing the June books, which will be done by the end of August. So you won't see a preliminary June statement until September. So back to May. For overall property revenue, we are up 34.3 million versus prior year, driven primarily by higher property taxes, offset by lower fines and fees and interest income. Property tax revenue is at 40.6 million as compared to prior year, as talked about throughout the year. That's due to the allocation of the penny increasing to general fund in FY20 versus FY24. Property taxes are now fully collected for FY25. Other local taxes are up 2 million versus prior year. That's primarily in the business tax collection line. State revenue is flat. Federal and local tax revenues are up 2.2 million, driven by some higher reimbursements from the city of Memphis. Fines and fees are down almost $9 million, and that is driven by general sessions. They did an audit cleanup last year. I would say we're reviewing that line further for revenue collection for FY25. Additionally, county register fees are a little bit lower than prior year. Interest is down 1.7 million as interest rates were overall a little bit lower versus last year. Personnel expenditures are up 25.5 million or 9.1%. That's due to the salary increase that was implemented in January 25, as well as the increase in the county's contributions to pension plan, required contributions. O&M is up 14 point million, driven by a variety of line items, as it has been throughout the year. Just overall, things cost more than they used to. Certainly in, in areas like insurance, we see costs hopefully stabilizing now, but have gone up pretty dramatically over the last few years. I would note again that this is the May report. June is a heavy month for operate, for O&M expenses to flow through. So you would, should expect to see that increase pretty dramatically before we close the books. You know, our preliminary statement that we have run so far does show that we are already at a point of using fund balance, and we still have other things to report. So you should continue to expect a very, very tight general fund operating budget. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Curious on the, on the almost eight, almost 9 million on the fines and fees. I'm assuming that includes the county, county clerk's office?
No, this is, that's general sessions is driving that.
I see. Where would we find the, the vehicle registration fee?
That is in the, I'm sorry, that, that is in that line, but the decrease is not driven. Well, I'm, I'm sorry. No, the, the wheel tax is not in the general fund. That's in a separate special revenue fund.
I see. Okay.
And I mean, those, those collections are, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I know that they are down versus prior year. That, I apologize, that doesn't flow through to a special revenue fund. That flows through to education fund and debt service. And so you will not see it in general fund.
Okay. So do we have that listed anywhere on, in this report?
No, this is solely general fund.
Okay. I got it.
I can get you those numbers, but I don't have them off the top of my head.
Do, are we receiving the monthly reports?
We are.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Ford?
Thank you. And Chair, you'll know where I'm coming from on this. So if you can allow me just a little bit of latitude, because we don't have an audit committee, but because these figures would basically reflect what we would have in an audit committee. Ms. Schombach mentioned that we're still in the process of closing the books. We're using fund balance right now. And she also mentioned a tight general operating budget. So if you can answer these questions for me, I know the June 30 deadline has passed, but there's still some cleanup that has to be done, number one. We also have an August 31 deadline where the auditor comes in and the due diligence has to be done for the purposes of us getting to the December 31 deadline. So my question to you is, where are we at as far as the auditors are concerned? Because I know that there's that 60-day window where we have to basically step aside and let, who is it? Watkins? Huberall? Is that who we still have? Whoever our auditor is, we have to do our due diligence to make sure that we hit that particular deadline. So I know that the budget was reopened at the wee hours with like 10 hours to go before July 1. But my question is, where are we at as far as hitting these timelines? Because Ms. Schombach already stated, Ms. Tipton, we're still in the process of closing the books. In that process, we're using fund balance now, and we're going to have a tight general operating budget. So since it sounds like you're about to answer the question, do you agree with what Ms. Schombach just stated? And if so, where are we at with the timelines?
Good morning. Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. Yes, I do agree with what Ms. Schombach, our Deputy Director, Schombach just stated. And as far as the timeline, we are on track for having our books closed, as a preliminary close, I should say, by August 31. As far as the auditors are concerned, we are in the process now of contracting with auditors to perform the audit for FY25. So we will have to bring that to the board after this commission meeting.
Are these outside auditors separate from who we usually customarily have?
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. Yes, they are, because our auditors, Watkins, Huberall, informed us that they would not be able to do our audit this year.
Last five seconds, was there any written correspondence on that and any reasons?
They gave us 30 days notice, and they are very short-staffed right now. So they are not in a position to perform the audit.
Chair, I yield, but that's very interesting. I would love to get more information on that, but I yield back to you.
Okay. Yep, sure. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you. I have a question on the summary. The last line, transfers are volatile and to some extent reflect transfer of ARPA funds as projects are funded. Could you please explain the volatility and the, how the ARPA funds, could you just elaborate, explain that a little more for us?
Danielle Schombach, Deputy Director, Administration and Finance. Whereas we have a particular schedule, like we know that property taxes come in heavily December through February. You know, some items are evenly received throughout the years. ARPA would be dependent on when a project is funded, and that money would then be transferred over to fund that project from the ARPA fund.
So are we going to lose anything because of?
No. No. All, Danielle Schombach, Deputy Director, Administration and Finance, all funds were encumbered by the end of- All funds were encumbered by the end of '24 as required and are on track to be out the door by the end of '26 as required, calendar '26.
As has been passed by the commission, are there chances that something may change? There was a backup plan in place or anything?
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. The ARPA funds, as you know, were encumbered as of December 31, 2024. And what Deputy Director Schombom was speaking of, we cannot recognize ARPA funds as fund balance. Therefore, as the projects are moved forward and we are expending those dollars, we then transfer the funds from the grant fund where the ARPA funds sit into the general fund to offset those expenses. So that would cause that transfer number to look like it's, you know, moving back and forth, but it's only moving because as the expenditures come in for the projects that were funded with ARPA dollars, we then move those in on the bottom line as a transfer to offset the bottom.
And just to make sure, we're locked in with the projects as are? There's no backup like we saw that or anything?
Yes, we are locked in with our projects. Unless I hear otherwise from somebody that's not doing something, we are set. We're good.
Okay. So there is something that could still change it?
If somebody dies or something happens, yeah. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying the project is set unless some catastrophe or something happens.
And we lose the money.
Then we lose it, yeah.
Okay, not something else come in and?
No.
All right, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Ford?
My last question, so Ms. Tipton, put your seat back, you're about to do this. So even though it cannot be used regarding fund balance, those ARPA dollars could have been used for revenue loss, is that correct?
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. We did take the ARPA dollars as revenue loss.
Right, and did this body, because of something that was brought down by the administration, where those particular dollars, you already know what fiscal year I'm talking about, they were set, but this body decided to basically take those revenue loss dollars for a particular project, making it go down to zero? You gave us a very colorful spreadsheet, and we had two FY years where ARPA dollars were used for revenue loss. And the last fiscal year that you had in your spreadsheet that had a revenue loss item, my question is, was it still used for revenue loss? I know the answer. Or was that dollar figure on your spreadsheet used to fund a project?
Shelby County took all of the dollars, Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. We took the dollars as revenue loss, taking it as revenue loss. That allowed you the ability to fund projects, to help support charities, to do a number of things that we chose to do with the dollars. So when you say, did we change? No, we did not change. It was still revenue loss, no matter what project we funded with the dollars.
You answered the question. All right, I yield, thank you. So the short answer was yes.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Sugarman?
Thank you. And so since we're on the topic of ARPA funds, so let's say that we have an organization, a nonprofit hypothetically, are not hitting the marks that they stated they would be. Can we then reallocate those dollars to another organization? Or is that already locked into that particular organization?
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. The dollars that we award to nonprofits is a grant. So when we give them those dollars, we are basically saying, this will help to support the organization that you have. So when you say not hitting the mark, I'm not sure, because if we were saying, if we were holding them to a mark to hit, then that way we would be controlling the dollars. But we're giving this money to a nonprofit, and we don't control it after that.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, let's please press the screen to vote on item number one.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have seven aye votes.
All right, item one will go down with a favorable recommendation. Item number two?
Item two is a resolution approving a contract with Loomis Armored US LLC to provide armored car and safe point services on behalf of the Shelby County Trustee's Office. This contract commences on July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026, in an amount not to exceed This item requires the expenditure of FY 2026 trustee general funds in an amount not to exceed $132,465.66. Code Enforcement Enterprise Fund in an amount not to exceed $11,520.96. Correction Center Fund in an amount not to exceed $8,255.56. And Health Services Admin and Finance Fund in an amount not to exceed $25,250.64. Sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs.
All right, need to guard the cash, I guess, here. This item has been moved by Commissioner Ford, seconded by Commissioner Sugarman. Good morning, Madam Trustee.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Regina Newman, County Trustee, 157 Povlar, where the air conditioning is not working. So, this is a single-source contract for one year with Loomis. Aside from the normal courier service for all the fee-producing offices, it also includes our safe points, also known as smart safe or virtual vault services for many of the offices whereby we get immediate credit by putting them in this little ATM in the building, and then it gets picked up later, so that reduces the number of visits that Loomis has to make. Also, for the new kiosk coming onboard for the trustee's office later this year, there will be three, so this includes that pickup as well.
Okay, thanks so much. Don't see anyone on the screen, so Madam Clerk, we can take item two to vote. All right, we can close the screen and record the vote.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please tally our votes?
Please place me down as a yes vote. We have aye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have seven aye votes.
Okay, item two will go down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Budget Chair, I'll turn it back over to you for item three.
Thank you so much. Madam Parliamentarian, can you read item number three, please?
Item three is a resolution to receive and file the trustee's annual report of delinquent tax for the year ended June 30, 2025, in accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated, Section 67-5-1903, and to authorize credit be given to the trustee, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs.
Thank you so much, Madam Parliamentarian. This item was moved by Commissioner Sugarman and seconded by Commissioner Ford. Madam Trustee?
Good morning, Commissioners. Regina Newman, County Trustee. This is a report required by statute that we provide you in the month of July on all delinquent taxes owed to the county, including pilots. And so I will state that the collection percentage overall for the fiscal year '25 was 97.28, which is exactly the same as the year before, and I'm going to present it for your approval.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. I don't see any Commissioners standing in queue for this item. Madam Clerk, can you please take this item to a vote?
We have aye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have seven aye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, can you read item number four, please?
Item four is a resolution to receive and file the Shelby County Trustee's annual financial report for the year ended June 30, 2025, in accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated, Section 67-5-1902, sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs.
Thank you so much, Madam Parliamentarian. This item was moved by Commissioner Sugarman and seconded by Commissioner Ford. Madam Trustee?
Good morning, Commissioners. Regina Newman, County Trustee. This is the annual report to the commission, required by statute, to be presented in July. It includes the beginning balances of all county general ledger funds as of July 1 of last year, and the ending balance as of June 30. There's approximately 25 billion that goes in and out, and so I present it for your approval.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Commissioner Ford, you're in the queue.
Thank you, and I'm trying to make sure I'm asking it for the purposes of how this is going to affect future reports and your office. So it sort of touches what transpired on the 30th of June, when some of the things that I know administration wanted your office to do and not do. On the 23rd of June, we deliberated on the budget. On the 30th, it was revisited. I abstained from that item for the reasons that I stated on record around 2 o'clock on the 30th. But I have to ask this because there are some deadlines and timelines, and they affect not just your office, but they affect other offices. So if there are any electors that are listening, any of this that comes in as far as money and whatnot is concerned, you already had the CFO and one of the deputy CFOs talking about closing the books, using fund balance, and having other auditors come in. But I want to focus on your office and this item. So as of today, have you received from the administration, and I'm just looking as we go forward, have you received any of your information regarding the salary restrictions that were voted on by this body on the 30th, when the budget was brought back up?
Regina Newman, County Trustee. I know what the ones were for the 23rd of June. I do not know what the ones were for the 30th, aside from the 5.3 million across the board.
Okay, and I'm assuming, Madam Chair, none of us has gotten the breakdown of that number, that 5.3 million dollars, for not just this office, but the electors. And the reason why I'm bringing this up, and I have to bring it up because there's a deadline that's in place, there are electors that may entertain suing Shelby County government because of salary restriction issues. Now, I don't know if the Chair of Budget has the breakdown of who got what salary restriction, but I do know that the deadline to sue is today.
I have not received that information.
You have not received that information, so I'm not telling any elected what to do. I would never do that, but since we've had over three weeks to get that information, I don't know if it was intentional or not by this administration not to give that information so that the deadline can go past, but I will say this, and I hope it doesn't affect this item or what you do in your office. But if electors did not get that information, and you believe that this will cause adverse effects in your office, today is your deadline to sue. I'm not telling you what to do, but we'll see what happens. But we should already have that information, Madam Chair. So I'm going to vote for this item, but I just don't like where it's going as far as not having the information. We had three weeks to get that information, and the electors did too, and I don't know if that was intentional. I'm done.
All right, there are no other Commissioners in the queue for this item, so Madam Clerk, can you please prepare our screens for voting? Madam Clerk, can you please tally our votes?
We have aye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have seven aye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, can you read item number five, please?
Item five is a resolution approving one single-source vendor contract for services related to the trustee's tax collection system for project management and application development services with Risk Analytics LLC, in an amount not to exceed $76,500 from July 1, 2025, through October 4, 2025. This contract will be expended against the Capital Improvement Program, CIP funds. This item requires expenditure carried forward funds in a total amount not to exceed $76,500. Sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs.
Thank you, Madam Parliamentarian. That item was moved by Commissioner Sugarman and seconded by Commissioner Mills. Madam Trustee?
Regina Newman, County Trustee. This is a partial-year contract through the beginning of October for the project manager for our long-being-implemented system, our excellent but long-suffering project manager. And we just needed to prove, in the amount stated, for a portion of this year, it is single-source, and then hopefully we can eliminate that work.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. I don't see any Commissioners in queue regarding this item. Madam Clerk, can you please tally our votes?
We have aye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have seven aye votes.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. That item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, I believe we are on item number six.
Item six is a resolution amending the fiscal year 2026 operating budget to allocate an appropriate funding in the amount of $11,226,461, for the purposes of transforming the Youth Justice and Educational Center operations from the Shelby County Sheriff to the Shelby County Division of Corrections. This item requires the allocation and appropriation of fiscal year 2026 general fund fund balance in the amount of $11,226,461. Sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
Thank you, Madam Parliamentarian. This item was moved by Commissioner Caswell, a seconded by Chairman Whaley. I will hand it over to Chief Collins.
Good morning, Commissioners. Harold Collins, Chief Administrative Officer. This is a resolution that the administration is presenting to you today, culminating months of work with the juvenile court judge and the Mayor Harris's administration to succeed in providing supervision to the Youth Justice Education Center. As we all know, Shelby County Sheriff's Office decided that at the end of Sheriff's Office decided that at the end of September, they will no longer provide supervision to the Youth Justice Education Center. And so the administration, through working with Judge Sugarman's team, have come with a plan to provide the supervision. And we ask that you approve this measure, as we presented it first in our FY26 budget. And so we're here today to ask you to approve this measure so that we can begin to recruit, hire, and train Shelby County correction officers to provide the supervision at the Youth Justice Education Center. Today, we have CFO Tipton and Director of Corrections, Anthony Alexander, here to answer your questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Chief Collins. Commissioner Caswell, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, CL and Director. My question is, when it comes to the jail, I know a lot of discussion and things have been worked out as far as the salaries for the gentlemen who are going to be worked, the deputies. I was wondering, where are we on, when it comes to classes and the schooling, the mental health purpose? Is that included in this budget?
Anthony Alexander, Director of Corrections. Yes, sir, it is. We've already begun hiring. We've had three classes, a total of, I believe, about 45 individuals right now. We're still interviewing daily, and we've got another 173 individuals to go through interview and backgrounds. And so it is inclusive of the handle with care training that we've mentioned, and mental health training as well.
Thank you, Director. And I know that you have, I believe it's Life Church that's out doing ministry at the Peneform. Is that an option? Oh, the Division of Corrections, is that something that you're looking at when you talk about opportunities for faith groups to come in as well to this facility?
Anthony Alexander, Corrections. And so we've been contacted by Hope Presbyterian Church as well, Pentecostal Temple, I believe it is, here as well. So there's several religious organizations that have reached out to us that want to participate in this organization, in the transition with Youth Justice and Education Center.
And one last question. When it comes to transportation, I know that was an issue about getting the young... you from there to the courts, is that included in this when it comes to transporting them to the courts?
Yes, sir, it is included. We have the... it includes purchasing of a vehicle for the transport, as well as the six individuals that will be positioned at 616 Adams.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Caswell. Commissioner Ford, you're in the queue.
Thank you, and I may have to get in a second time. I'm reading this caption, and it says appropriation from the general fund fund balance. Am I reading that correctly? Yes, I am. I stated on a previous budget item and another item, I just want people to be consistent. I don't want it being because they can do something. And the reason why I say that, Madam Chair, is because $11.2 million is a big item. I'm not questioning a subjective importance, or whatever the case may be. I'm questioning process. We just heard, and you weren't in here when it was brought, that we are still trying to close our books. We're using fund balance now, and we're going to have a tight general operating budget that came from a deputy CFO. Our CFO agreed and said that we are on track for books being preliminarily closed by August 31. We had to contract other auditors because the auditor that we've had for over a decade said we can't do it this time. The reason why I'm bringing that up is because a couple of years ago, and I went back and looked at the tape, my colleague to my left, as well as Commissioner Thornton, brought something of a significantly lower amount after we passed the budget. And it was brought to our attention at that well by a deputy CAO and CFO that we needed to wait until all the books were taken care of, and the deadline, August 31st, passed before we even entertained fund balance. I know exactly what item. Dr. Hall sat there, Ms. Tipton sat there, and it was stated that we needed to wait until the due diligence was done so that we could be in compliance with whatever the comptroller has stated with those deadlines that are state law. So with that being said, I do not want to hear now, oh, well, that was different. We was just doing that for two Commissioners for a smaller amount. But because now we have this script in front of us, what we'd said to you two years ago is different. No, it's not. No, it's not. I heard something about September being the day where there's not going to be service, or whatever the case may be. Okay, if that's the case, fine. But as far as what was brought to us in a previous item, we are still in the process of closing the books. And I would state, for the purposes of being consistent, that anything that involves fund balance before August 31st be held off until we get to that particular finish line so that we can entertain items. If we're going to... I'll get back in the queue. I was just going to say, if we're going to change the rules in the middle of the game, just tell me. But I'll get back in the queue. But that actually happened. I just want to bring that to the episode and sample.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Sugarman, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, question for Commissioner Ford. Are you going to make a motion to defer this? For information? If not...
You want me to answer this?
Yes, sir.
Well, I know that we will have more conversation right now on individuals trying to push this now, regardless of what happened two years ago. You were the main sponsor on a particular item, you and Commissioner Thornton, and you were told to wait because the books had to be set. So you're the one that's in the queue. If they want to give another reason saying, well, we just did that for y'all, but now because we have this item, and we might have seven people, disregard what happened two years ago, even though the rules are still the rules. So I don't know what I'm going to do yet until people start saying what they are going to say in these microphones. I don't know what they're going to say. Well, I have an idea, but I just want to see if there's some consistency. So I'm not doing anything yet, but we'll see what they say and what they do.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Chief Collins.
Harold Collins, Chief Administrative Officer. I do agree with Commissioner Ford's assessment that a year ago, we were in a position where we wanted to wait until after the books were to be closed, before we were to move forward with other resolutions to spend fund balance. This particular time, the administration, if you recall, put this in our budget for FY26, a part of the 12-point, $5 million or so that we requested from this body that you voted on on July 23. Subsequently, because of the challenges that you all foresaw with the passing of that budget, you came back on June 30 to rescind that $12.5 million that was allocated in the budget to go forward. And so at that June 30 meeting, I sat before you all and said specifically that, and it's in the tape because I went over and looked at it, that you are cutting out the service of the Youth Justice and Education Center. And we are in agreement with the Shelby County Sheriff's Office and the juvenile court judge to assume responsibility effective October 1, 2025. And in that measure, it calls for Director Alexander to go out and recruit and train individuals to serve in that center. And so I specifically heard the chairman say, yes, sir, we understand, that we know that you will be back on July 23 to come here to speak to you about this. And so here we are today, making sure that you all understand that in order for us to begin the process of supervising the youth at the Youth Justice and Education Center, number one, Director Alexander has to go out and recruit individuals to serve in the facility. Number two, there is a six-week, or 12-week, 12-week training program for those individuals because they are supervising youth, which the Department of Children's Services requires a specialty training. And number three, the Shelby County Sheriff has said unequivocally he is leaving on September 30. And so if this body decides that you do not want to do this today, then those youth will not be supervised on September 30. Or you would have to make arrangements with the Shelby County Sheriff's Office to continue their process until you decide that you're going to allocate the funding to do so. We made that very clear from day one, or at least beginning June 23. Or in that case, May, I believe, 5, when the mayor proposed this budget to you all in this room. And so nothing has changed. But I do say, I do agree with Commissioner Ford, that we sat here last year to say we wanted to wait until the books were closed. But at that time, we proposed this particular item in our proposed budget for FY26. And that's the position of the administration.
Thank you, Chief Collins. Commissioner Ford, I'm going to go to Commissioner Caswell, and come back to you. Commissioner Caswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And pretty much, that's what I was looking for in answer because, one, I didn't support the budget at all, because I knew, like, this is what we're going to be dealing with. The fact that we are continuing to put our youth that look like me in a higher danger because we're not addressing them, and we kick... we're continuing to kick it down the road. The sheriff already said he's ready to go. My question in part is, the money that the sheriff was leaving behind when it comes to the officers, is that equated to... not to the officers, because the officer's dollars was going to go with him, but other dollars was going to stay in the budget, is that equated into this factor when you all did the budget?
CFO Tipton.
Thank you. Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. I had some handouts revising the Exhibit A that shows where we did include in our FY26 budget the $6.5 million that we included in the sheriff as a vacancy savings, a vacancy restriction. So that will count as part of the total amount. So right now, you have the original Exhibit A in front of you. I can kind of explain that to you so that it makes more sense. The first column, if you look at that exhibit, the first column shows what was included in the FY26 budget, which is the 50 positions that were approved. Do you need me to pass them out? Because I do have a set.
If you have, yeah, something that can be passed out, please do.
Yeah, this will help everyone understand exactly how the sheriff's budget is impacting this. So if you notice that, the first column, which is the adopted FY26 budget, that includes the 50 positions that the Corrections YJAC office was budgeted for. You approved those 50 positions in FY25. And that total was $3,382,467 with the restriction. The second column on the handout is the total amount for FY2026 proposed for YJAC. In order to operate the Corrections YJAC office, we're saying that we need $14.6 million total. That's including salaries, fringe, and O&M. The third column is the amendment to FY26, which we're before you today with. This amendment shows the additional 98 positions now for YJAC being budgeted, then all of the O&M that is being requested of $2.394 million. So the total amount is $11,226,461. That's the amount we have to amend the budget for in order to operate YJAC under the corrections. But then, if you go below, you'll see that we include the 6.5 as a vacancy savings for the sheriff. So net-net, the impact to the FY26 budget is $8.1 million. So we do take into consideration the amount that we took from the sheriff. We did not do a vacancy savings for the full amount because he is operating for the first quarter from July to September 30. But we did restrict 6.5 million of his budget to offset what we are also showing as the total amount for YJAC. I hope that made more sense.
I think, Commissioner Caswell, you're back in the queue.
Yeah. Madam Chair, if I can... because I just want to just be added as a sponsor so I won't have to get back.
All right. That was moved by Commissioner Caswell, a second by Commissioner Wright. Can we accept that without objection? So moved. I'm going to go to you, Commissioner Brooks, and then I'll come back for those who have a second turn in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Collins, for clarity regarding the funds from the sheriff's department outside of the restrictions, are there any dollars left over, any dollars that was given to the sheriff's office for maintenance and operation of YJAC that is remaining, that can be given over to the Division of Corrections? Or is that included somewhere here?
Harold Collins, Chief Administrative Officer. I'm going to ask Chief Tipton to respond to the numbers.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. Yes, ma'am. As I mentioned, the total budget for the Youth Justice Detention Center under the sheriff's office for FY26, the total budget there was the two... let's see. We did a restriction of 6.5 million. So we kept... they kept $1.9 million in order to run their operation for the first quarter. So, yeah. And year-to-date, as of today, they've spent $231,000. So the total amount for the FY26 budget was $2.2 million, and they've spent $231,000, and remaining now is $1,993.
And that's specifically YJAC?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. And we have that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Ford, you're back in the queue.
All right. Thank you to Ms. Tipton through the chair. Do you forecast corrections operating on the deficit again this year? And is there going to be a resolution that's going to come in front of us so that we can comply with GASP?
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. Yes, we did, and yes, there will be.
Do you know the dollar amount?
At this moment, I do not know exactly what it's going to be.
Is it similar to what it might be from last year?
Yes.
And is that going to come to fund balance also?
Yes.
All right. So we already got something that's coming down the pipeline where we've got to use fund balance. And then you had, for item number one, it was stated that we're using fund balance now. It's also stated that September 30 is the day that the service is going to cease. So I'm going to say this real quick, and I'm going to get back to this. There have already been discrepancies for what has been brought to my attention that this body passed regarding the budget. And I know what has transpired. I'm going to wait until we get to another item before we get to that, because there are some things that I believe people wanted to hear on record, but they do not match up with what this body has done. And Madam Chair, one of those items dealt with vacancy savings and salary restrictions, which we still don't have. But the reason why I'm bringing it up on this item is because I've already stated, not once, but twice, that there are things that we have to finish up and clean up. I know we don't like using cleanup resolutions as the phrase, but the CFO stated something's going to be coming to clean up the budget that's going to be using fund balance. And I want to say it was about $9 million last year. Now we have an $11 million item here. So my question is, since September 30 was the date that was brought up, what keeps this body from cleaning up the books? this body from cleaning up the books, entertaining this on the first meeting in September, disposing of it that following Monday, to still make the deadline? And then we can have numbers and figures to where we might not necessarily have to use a significant amount of fund balance in order to get this done? Because if September 30th is the final day, and we have a meeting in September where we can meet on Wednesday and dispose of this on Monday and still make the finish line, and then Ms. Tipton and her group can have the books taken care of, to where we might have some other places we could find this money? It was stated a little bit that, and I'm not a fan of going back to the sheriff, some people have been making a habit of that, but if that keeps this $11.2 million number coming exclusively from fund balance to lower it to something significant, I would wanna entertain that as well. I'm not gonna necessarily make that motion up here, but I would probably bring it up downstairs when we have a full group of people, just to be consistent, and there would be no liberty of time being lost. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Chief Collins, thank you, Commissioner Ford.
Excuse me. What I would like to do is ask Director Alexander to give this body a summary of what it takes to start up this particular process, so that everybody will be clear that you just can't pass a resolution the day before a takeover like this, or, I'm not gonna use the term takeover, but a succession like this, and to be prepared, to be in, in alignment with state law. And so, Director, will you share with the commission what it takes to recruit, to hire, and train, and how much time that takes, so that everybody will be knowledgeable of the fact that we just can't throw out a net tomorrow and then put people in place to supervise the youth? Thank you.
Anthony Alexander, Director of Corrections. And Chief, I'd like to start off first with part of the O&M. And so, right now, the youth justice center is being served by Airmark. And we propose, when the Division of Corrections take it over, to bring that service in-house as we do with the Division of Corrections. With that being said, those, there are certain items that we have to purchase that require a lead time, that you can't simply do in four weeks or two weeks. Currently, the youth are being served on Styrofoam trays. Styrofoam trays will not hold the appropriate temperature of the meals that are being served. And so, what we do with the Division of Corrections is we utilize an insulated tray. Well, it takes time to purchase those insulated trays, and so we can have them in stock, heat warming boxes, and all of those type items. But when it comes to the personnel, Chief, we've got 12 sergeants, seven lieutenants, it's one captain that we have to promote. That posting is scheduled to go up next Friday. I delayed it so we can draft a letter for the staff at the Youth Justice and Education Center that would like to transfer to the Division of Corrections. But with that being said, the posting is normally up for two weeks, then you have to allow for two weeks of testing. And then, once you test those individuals, you have to go through an interview process. If we fill those supervisory positions, and those are now line staff positions that I have to backfill, because once you take a sergeant, that sergeant's coming from an officer, the lieutenant is coming from a sergeant, and the captain's coming from lieutenant. So those are positions that I have to backfill. Again, that's 12 weeks of training for some of those individuals. And for the individuals that we're gonna hire as supervisors, that could be up to two weeks of trainings, especially if we bring individuals over from the Shelby County Sheriff's Office. It's simply not a lateral transfer, and you place an individual on a seat. The state will not allow that. We have to train them according to the Division of Corrections policies. And right now, we're facing timelines, because a lot of things we have to order as far as supplies, testing, getting individuals in the academy. And so that's why we're asking for this resolution to be passed.
Harold Collins, Chief Administrative Officer. So, Commissioners, I hope that you have now got a full understanding of why we're here today. It would be easy for us to come back in September, on September 15 or so, to do this. But you have to ramp up and have the quality of persons monitoring the youth in our facility. And so unfortunately, that's why we're here. And I remind you, on June 30th, I specifically shared, this is what would be the case. And so hopefully now, we're asking you to approve this resolution so that we can begin the process of the transition. The alternative is for some of us to then go to the sheriff, and ask the sheriff, if he's willing, to continue the supervision in the YJAC until such time this body approves this resolution. Thank you.
Commissioner Sugarman, if I could go to Commissioner Mills, because she hasn't had an opportunity to speak yet, and then come back to you, would that work? Because this will be her first time.
That's fine. You overlook me for past several commissioners, but that's fine.
No, ma'am, I haven't, you, you haven't spoken. I thought you've already spoken on this item, or was that the previous item?
I had a question.
So, I'll ask your question, and no, I have not overlooked you. We were trying to go with all the commissioners that hadn't spoken yet. Go ahead, Commissioner Sugarman.
Thank you. And for the record, I mean, several commissioners have spoken two or three times. But, thank you for giving the sense of urgency, and I understand, because, again, you, you come up with 200 people, applicants potentially, and then you get down to 45 that actually qualify, and that is a concern. So, I urge my colleagues to support this. And just for the record, I just wanna state again, and I disclose this every meeting, that Judge Sugarman is my brother, and I will be voting on this item. Thank you.
Commissioner Mills.
Thank you. My first question, this $11.2 million, the mayor now has a maintenance of effort. Will this increase his maintenance of effort by $11.2 plus million?
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. I can defer to Legal.
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, this would result in an increase in the maintenance of effort?
Okay. My, my next question, since that answer is a yes, is it, would you state on the record if it's good practice or not to use fund balance for recurring cost?
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. In light of this situation, where we did have this included in our budget, and unfortunately, the body decided to reduce the budget by $21 million, as well as add additional spending, we're at a point now where we must do this according to law. So, it qualifies as what fund balance should be used for. Other things that fund balance should not be used for are miscellaneous awards and grants. But this is something by law that we're required to do, so this is something that fund balance should be used for.
So I'll ask again, in general, yes or no, is it a good practice to use fund balance for recurring cost?
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance, in light of us being...
No, ma'am, just...
In general?
In general.
In general?
In general.
In light of the situation, yes, it is good practice.
So you're saying it's good practice to use fund balance for a recurring cost? Every...
Everything. We can just come, 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 recurring cost, fund balance. Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance, I think I've answered your question.
You didn't. You gave your exclusionary, "it's good because I say so this time" answer. That, that was not. So, remind me as quickly as you can, because I'm about out of time now, why did the sheriff pull out from being over the youth juvenile facility? I know because he didn't have to, but what was the reasoning?
Harold Collins, Chief Administrative Officer. The sheriff gave us the reason for pulling out of the Youth Justice, Youth Justice and Education Center, because, one, he didn't have, he did not have an official MOU to provide this service with juvenile court. And second, he said he needed those officers inside Youth Justice and Education Center to go to 201 popular.
He didn't have the manpower or the funding to, to handle it moving forward. So, did you plan ahead, my time is out, last question, for the funding, you just assumed that this body would approve additional funding for this, and it would all be good, and go on our merry way? Is that, and I know it was in his proposed budget, but I have a deal, I have an issue with the maintenance of effort, now that the state law has passed that?
Well, Harold Collins, Chief Administrative Officer. During this process, the administration had meetings with the sheriff after he made it clear that he no longer wanted to provide the supervision. And our immediate request was, would you be willing to transfer the funds that you get to serve the Youth Justice Education Center to us, so that we could do it, and it wouldn't be any harm to the taxpayers or the general fund? And I think members of this body decided that if we did that, that would be defunding the police.
It would lower his maintenance of effort, yes.
And so, the administration did not wanna get into a back-and-forth with this body and the sheriff about him being defunded. And so, that's why we put it in our FY26 budget, that this body decided to vote down and, for various reasons.
Okay. My time is out. I'll get back in the queue if my next question isn't asked.
Commissioner Wright, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was last a moment ago, and so the queue has been shuffled now, but I was going to recommend that we take this down without recommendation. But I'll say, you know, I guess in lieu of that, since there's more commissioners in the queue, my request would be, could, could you all help us with some options? Because it sounds like there's some hesitation on using this all from fund balance, or from restriction, restricted salaries. Are there other creative solutions that finance could bring to the, to the table? You know, as far as, as far as the timing is concerned, there are some things I could think of to, to help us, you know, get through November. If we, if we delay certain expenditures, as far as, you know, repurposing funds or things like that, I'd just be curious, before I take a vote, to know if there are other options that exist. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Brooks, you're in the queue.
Chief Collins, were you about to say something?
Harold Collins, Chief Administrative Officer. Commissioner Wright, thank you for the question. We appreciate your willingness to try to find other options. But the administration put forth what we believe were two of the best scenarios possible. The first scenario was to go to the sheriff and say, since you are deciding not to continue the service with the Youth Justice Education Center, provide that funding that you receive each year to us, and let us continue on. He rejected that item. And so, the second measure was to put it in our FY26 budget, which we did. And this body rejected that item. And so, here we are now, saying, we provided you what we thought were two of the best possible scenarios. And at both terms, we were told, you're gonna be defunding the police, number one, which we thought we weren't. And number two, we put it in our budget so that you could fund it at the reasonable pace that legislative bodies do. That's our position.
Thank you, Chief Collins. Commissioner Brooks, now your time.
Thank you. I just wanted to, a couple of things, because this is a little confusing to me. Following Committee Six, and all of that, all of that support for children, and all of the comments about saving our children during Committee Six, and then we get here, I'm trying to understand, justify, not justify, just trying to understand if, if that was just hypocrisy, or what that was, because we're still talking about children. We're still talking about children. So is there some discrimination between education-impacted youth and ju, uh, justice-impacted youth? And it should not be, because they're all our children. And then, as far as defunding the police, I mean, you know, that MAGA language is just something that we just need to totally ignore. We are not in a position with our children to even deal in that kind of, I mean, just trafficking, that kind of talk. The sheriff has money that belongs to YJAC. It belongs to the children. And just like in schools, when children leave public school, go to charter school, for an example, the money follows the children. So, the sheriff has not used all of that money. Money needs to follow the children. This is an important need. It shouldn't be in a debate about this, unless we just don't care, or unless that, all of that support, and all of that hugging that we did around Committee Six was just hypocrisy. This, this is where we need the money more. This is where we need the money most. So, I, I just, I'm trying to understand that, and I probably won't, and I don't normally like to deal, you know, traffic, MAGA language, but this is just almost impossible to ignore. I am just scrambling, scrambling, to find why there's such an objection, an objection to helping children who are already in risky situations, to turn their lives around and get out of it. And it's not something that you can just do overnight. Planning has gone into this, we've had, the administration, I mean, there's been a lot of planning. There's a lot of more planning that's needed. But it should not have to be all of this. We know the need. We see it every day. They parade it on those idiot boxes, every single day, all day, all over social media as well. So I'm just scrambling to understand, how did we get to where we are now from Committee Six? It's baffling. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Thornton, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. I've been following along with the conversation, and just have some additional questions for clarity. Can you send to us in advance of Monday, how much within the sheriff's budget, I just wanna make sure that the figures are consistent, from when it was with the sheriff, when it was in the proposed budget, and then today, the piece that remains that's unfunded? So how much actually was the cost within the sheriff's budget? How much did the administration propose in the fiscal year '26 budget to cover, you know, the now in-house operations? And then, we see the figure for today, so I can cross-reference that. Can you do the same also for the FTEs? So under the sheriff's office, like, what was the FTE count when he had it in his budget? When it was in the proposed budget, what was the FTE count? And then I see today that it's at 98. So that would just be helpful in advance of Monday. And then you talked about Airmark and bringing that in-house. Can you just say more of why we're making that decision, and what is the cost savings in doing so? And my last question is to Legal, we said that this will increase the MOE. Can you state for the record, what is the current MOE for the administration? And I'll stop there.
She asked you a question.
Okay. Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office. I don't have that figure, but can work with Finance.
Okay. So in advance of Monday, because I believe that came up in budget season, and we were supposed to be getting that figure, so that's an outstanding thing. And we're coming back from a 30-day hiatus from this work, so I would hope that we would get that information. Can we get something from Director Alexander about the Airmark, and just a commitment to get the other information for Monday?
Commissioner Ford?
I didn't know if my colleague made the motion, so for, to dispose of this item, I'd like to move that this item go down without a recommendation, so that we can get the answers to some of these questions, or the non-answers to some of these questions, for the purposes of disposing of this item, possibly on Monday. That's my motion.
I mean, if I may, it's just...
Oh, I heard Commissioner Ford, I'm sorry. I didn't know she was gonna disregard everything I said, and I didn't mean to take her time.
No, just, just the chair, I didn't know. Are you going to try to respond, Director Alexander?
Director Alexander, Division of Corrections. You wanted this information from...
Director Alexander, Division of Corrections, you wanted this information for Monday while we're moving from air mark?
There's specific numbers, but I mean, do you know today? I didn't think that that one needed to wait until Monday.
So I do not have the air mark numbers before me. I can tell you why we're transitioning from air mark to the Division of Corrections. It's just the quality of the meal service. And what we want to have is a quality meal for the youth at the detention center, correct temperature of meals being served, the times the meals are being served. And so, we've done that at the Division of Corrections and we've seen a tremendous increase in productivity from our residents who are consuming those meals. And so, we want to offer that same meal service to the youth at the Youth Justice and Education Center. I'll have to provide the calls for you though on Monday.
Thank you.
To Commissioner Thornton's point on that conversation regarding air mark in particular, can you give the number regarding if that's a cost savings or is it about the same amount of dollars or even if it's more? I think that will be important around understanding how we're truly measuring that conversation.
All right. Back to you, Commissioner Ford.
For real? Now, okay, all right. Just for the record, my, my questions were about processes. It were not about the importance, subjectively, objectively on this. I just wanted to make sure that there was some consistency. So, I will reiterate my motion. My motion is for this to go down without a recommendation for the purposes of getting questions answered. And I do sincerely hope that we can get some of those questions answered, because, Chair, I'll say this as I close off. I think that when we start comparing maintenance of effort to per pupil expenditures for schools, that is not the same thing. And when we start talking about it being about the children when it's in contrast to saving particular school board members, that has nothing to do with this item here as well. So with that being said, I hope that we don't have to go there on Monday. But I'd like to move for this item to go down without a recommendation so that we can get some of the questions answered that have to do with this and the processes. That's my motion.
That was moved by Commissioner Ford. I didn't, I heard a second, but I don't know who it came from. The second came from Commissioner Sugarman. Are we accepting that without objection? So moved. Madam Palmentarian, can you read item number seven, please?
Item seven is a resolution to amend the Shelby County District Attorney General's Office FY 2026 Grants Fund Operating Budget in the Amount of $300,000 to expand funding made available from the U.S. Department of Justice's Office of Justice Programs, Office of Victims of Crime. This grant is for the period of October 1, 2024, through May 1, 2026. Sponsored by Commissioner Mikel Lowery.
Thank you, Madam Palmentarian. This item was moved by Commissioner Wright, a second by Commissioner Thornton. Mr. DA.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to everybody. This is a federal grant that we got for a number of things, primarily to provide public safety-related services and compensation to victims. And I'm happy to answer questions about it, but I know, you know, your time is valuable, so I'll just end it there. We're simply asking that, that county accept these federal grants.
Thank you, DA Mulroy. I don't see any commissioners in queue on this item. Madam Clerk, can you please prepare our screens for voting? Madam Clerk, can you please tally your votes?
We have I-votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Caswell, Sugarman, Mills, Wright, and Thornton. We have seven I, no, I'm sorry, six I-votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Palmentarian, if you read item number eight, please.
Item eight is a resolution to amend the FY 2026 General Operating Budget for the specific purpose of funding M365 licenses for county employees in the Shelby County District Attorney's Office. Shelby County Government Information Technology Department is the recipient of the funding as Shelby County Government's managed services organization that provides information technology support to its clients. This item requires the appropriation and expenditure of the fund balance to the FY 2026 General Fund Operating Funds in an amount not to exceed $54,600. Sponsored by Commissioner Charlie Caswell. This item does not meet the requirements of the permanent rules. Chairwoman, I ask that once it's properly before us, that you entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you, Madam Palmentarian. This item was moved by Commissioner Sugarman, a second by Commissioner Thornton. All right, I'm going to go to Commissioner Caswell to, to move the item.
Yes, I just want to motion to move, to suspend the rules. To, that the items did not meet, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, did it not complete a legal review or a finance that was not approved? Yeah. Yes, sir.
I'll defer to Chief Administrative Officer Jessica Indigaro.
Hello, Jessica Indigaro, Chief Administrative Officer. It did not go through, it did not receive a finance approval or a legal approval. It does not go to legal until finance approves it. This was a fund balance request and I understand that that is likely the reason.
Moved by Caswell, Commissioner Caswell have a second to suspend the rules. Second by Commissioner Wright. Can we accept that without objection? So moved. All right, now, Mr. DA, you can speak on this item.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and good morning to all of you. DA Steve Mulroy here. I have CIO Indigaro for my office here as well. And we, we're expecting to have Sandra Perry from the County IT Department join us up here perhaps. Oh, okay, so who do we have from County IT?
Michael Jones.
We have Michael Jones.
Michael Jones, ITS Administrator.
This is an item that County IT itself said that we needed. Not that it would be nice to have, but that we needed. And there are at least two reasons for that. One is that our current operating system, which isn't Microsoft 365, is 15 years old and obsolete. But the other reason is that County IT raised data security issues that were pretty significant and that we needed them. Microsoft 365, my understanding is that we are the only, or maybe almost only, county agency that does not have Microsoft 365. So there's that issue. Right now, the state of Tennessee is moving to a new case management system. We, we use a case management system called Justware. They are moving statewide to a new case management system called Civic I. That's happening in the next few months. In order for us to be part of that system, which they are requiring us to do, we have to have something compatible. We have to have Microsoft 365, which every other DA office in the state has. Because that was understood in our meetings with the county budget folks from the get-go, this was always supposed to be part of the County IT budget. So if you're wondering why we're bringing this to you now, it's because it was always part of the County IT budget. It was part of the administration's budget, proposed budget. And then, as you recall, after the, the final budget meeting in which you adopted the tax rate and the budget, then you had to come back a week later and do one more. And in that, without notice to us, that got pulled. And so now, we've got this gap. And I'll also mention this, the state is providing the one-time funds needed to transfer the data over to the new system and they are paying for the recurring costs of the licenses for all the state employees. So they're paying the vast bulk of this. The only part that the county has to do is $54,000 of recurring funds for the county employees' licenses. And we, frankly, we just need it, that we don't, there's no other way to do this. There's no other way to get to Civic I, where they're the only agency that, that has this County IT says is necessary. I think it maybe just have been an oversight or a fluke that it got pulled at the last minute and, and we're just here, you know, please, can you, can you please help us out?
Thank.
I have someone from County IT here, maybe he, he wants to speak as well.
Michael Jones, ITS Administrator. The DA spoke eloquently. They are, it's no support for the systems that they have now. So, they're on 2010 and they are a security risk. I would correct you on one of the things you said. We have, everybody has been brought on board to 365 except for three entities and the DA's office happened to be one of them.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Commissioner Thornton, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you, you ended with where I was going. Can you name the three entities that, I don't know, what is the terms, what are the terms that we're using that their, their software is obsolete?
Yes, the 365 is what's replacing the office product. This allows us to operate in the cloud, if you will. The entities that I was speaking upon are departments would be the clerk's office. And one of the reasons there is that we need to get their equipment upgraded and then Juvenile Court, the, I forgot the side, it's not all of Juvenile Court, that's not on 365.
So where are we at in assessing how much it would cost to be able to bring all three entities up to par?
We have the monies for the clerk's office. It's just getting the equipment upgrading in order to do the transition.
And what, is there a barrier in doing that?
Working with the clerk on trying to figure out what equipment it is that they want.
And when you say that we have the, the money, it's in your budget under IT?
Yes.
And so what about Juvenile Court?
Juvenile Court is not part of the PC Refresh Program, so they would have to elect to come on board, just like the DA's office.
They would have to elect, do we have?
That means they would have to come up with the funding to, to procure those licenses.
Within their budget?
Yes.
So, do we have any type of dialogue that Juvenile Court has had with IT about their interests?
Now, the different scenario here with Juvenile Court is that they are on a 2016 platform, so they have a little time. DA Mulroy is on 2010, they don't have any time.
And when you said that they have a little time, how much time would they have?
I would have to get you those numbers on, on the support vector on 2016, but we would prefer that they come on board also, but they have elected not to do it this year.
And for the County Clerk's Office, what platform are they on?
The platform that they're on now is 2010 Office and XP is the operating system. I mean, Windows 7 is the operating system.
Okay, so if I'm just recapping, so we have three offices that are running on obsolete software, the County Clerk's Office, Juvenile Court, and DA's, the DA's Office. In your budget are monies to be able to reconcile the 2010 software for the Clerk's Office.
Correct.
The Juvenile Court issue, they're on a 26 platform, which isn't as urgent, and it's going to have to come from their budget.
Yes.
The DA is on the 2010 platform.
Yes.
Okay, I'll get back in queue for just a couple more questions.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Brooks, you're in the queue.
Thank you. Just for clarity, I need, well, clarity and understanding, did you say that Juvenile Court, they need these licenses, right? Is that what you said? Okay. And then you said also that they need to find the money in their budget? Is that what you said?
Michael Jones, ITS Administrator. So the Juvenile Court clerk situation is that they are not on the PC Refresh Platform. First of all, we have given them quotes on what it would take to bring them on board and they elected to defer it to another funding year.
Okay, so did you say that they needed, when they get ready to do this, they'll need to find the money in their budget? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, I'm trying to, now here's clarification part, so explain, clarify for me, why is it that the DA, and maybe I'm missing something, can come and get dollars from the fund balance? Why don't you tell him to find it in his budget?
Well, I don't do the finance piece, I just do the technical piece.
Well, I'm just trying to understand the difference here, okay? One can come up here and, yeah, solicit dollars and then the Juvenile Court clerk will have to try and move money, find money in her budget, which probably does not exist. I just need to understand how the difference works.
Yes, ma'am. Like I said before, Michael Jones, ITS Administrator. What we do in our department is, is we meet with each individual department and let them know where they are in their technical, technical space. And we send them the quotes on what we recommend doing and we wait on them to move forward, how they procure the funding. If they're not part of the PC Refresh Program, we don't get into that. They let us know whether or not they can move forward.
Okay, I guess there's no one from Finance that can answer my question. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Thompson, Commissioner Brooks.
Please. Real quick question. Can you help me to understand, and if I heard IT correctly, that in order for Juvenile Court, the Juvenile Court clerk to get the same products that the DA is here asking for from fund balance, the Juvenile Court clerk would have to dig or try to find it in her budget? So I'm just trying to understand why, that the difference, what's the distinction here other than, of course, offices? Why is it that she has to try to find it in her budget? Why isn't the fund balance available to her, just like the DA? And maybe I didn't understand it correctly.
Michael Thompson, Deputy CFO, Shelby County Government. The distinction is this. IT Services offers every department or division or elected official the opportunity to be a part of a PC Refresh Program. Okay? It's similar to a paid subscription to have your technology needs updated every three to four years. Okay? If you are a part of this program and that program is in your budget, then office, the, the maintenance for Office 365 is covered. If you are not a part of that PC Refresh Program, then the maintenance is not covered. I think that is the key distinction here. So, this would say for anyone, any, any department, any division, any elected official, it will behoove you to become a part of the PC Refresh Program to ensure that your technology needs are appropriately addressed. Thank you.
So, I guess I'm out of time.
Can you get back in the queue, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. Director Thompson, before you go too far, you mentioned the PC Refresh Program. Is this something that is just a practice of administration or is it by resolution ordinance? What, what stipulates, I guess, what, how we set the standard of how we're operating on systems? When people are saying that, you know, their systems are obsolete, do we have anything on, in our records that would govern how we ensure that there's a certain standard of execution across all departments?
Michael Thompson, Deputy CFO. I would defer that to the Director of IT. I think that would be best answered there.
I would agree. I think that, Mr. Jones, are you standing in, in her stead? And just the question is just, what, do we have anything, I mean, we're legislators, right? So I see an opportunity here to ensure that we're not waiting until, you know, everything has become obsolete to try to find funding. So what proactively can we do in legislation to be able to say, within three years, the administration will have to include in its budget a certain amount of funds to cover the costs to keep a certain standard? Do we have anything that's currently governing that we need to reevaluate or does that need to be implemented?
Michael Jones, ITS Administrator. I would say that probably is a question for Director Perry as far as the legislation is concerned, but I do know we communicate with them yearly. We have yearly in-person meetings on where We have yearly in-person meetings on where they are in their tech space. We also evaluate on a regular basis where they need to be. And we send out these communications regularly on what our recommendations are. Now, we control the infrastructure, so we do have some protections there as far as the network is concerned. But the PC space, when you are an entity that's not a part of the PC refresh program, that governing body does have some control there.
And the option to not be a part of the PC refresh program? Is that at the discretion of the electives or, okay. How, can you just email to all of us how many electives have opted out of the PC refresh program?
Yes, ma'am.
And then just another follow-up question. I heard the DA say that it was proposed that this particular budget request would fall under IT's budget. At what point, so when it was taken out, can you just walk us through again how we got to this point of it being under IT's budget? And now the DA is tasked with trying to get these funds?
Yeah, I would like to defer to Finance on that.
Mr. Jones, you're referring it to Finance as a question? Director Thompson? Director Thompson, there's a question for Finance. Chief Perry, you about to answer it, okay, there you go.
Sandra Perry, CIO, IT Services. Commissioner, your question regarding how, basically stepping back for the PC refresh program, under resolution in about 2013, the, that we established the PC refresh program, which allows all of the operating and elected officials to determine if they would like to participate in a program that allows them to lease, basically, for, that's the term we use, on a four-year cycle to automatically receive new hardware, being desktop PCs and monitors and peripherals of that nature. They have the option to opt out of the program. Some of our electives have opted out because of the way in which their funding is provided. So in those cases, we partner and we give them the quotes and we give them upfront cost. So they may have to do it year to year as opposed to on a four-year cycle. So as your funding, ITS has an internal service fund where we capture all of the funding on behalf of all the Shelby County Government in order to manage and maintain the four-year cycle. If they do it upfront on an annual basis based on their funding, then they actually partner with us and we provide the quotes. We still procure all of the equipment and we still do the installation. And then they in turn are receive an IDB and that is how we capture it.
Thank you, Chief Perry. Commissioner Thornton? Was it, okay, Commissioner Brooks, you're in the queue.
Thank you. So Director Perry, is the DA in the PC refresh program?
Sandra Perry, CIO. Currently at this time, they are not.
Did they opt out?
Well, my understanding is because they are funded by Shelby County as well as the state, it is in their best interest as they do purchases as needed. That's as much, and I refer to him.
Wait a minute. Let, let me get some clarification, understanding from the Director, please. So you said one now, I'm sorry.
When the funding for the PC refresh program, when you have the option to enroll in the program, some of our elected officials, based on the way they're funding, they, it is in their best interest that they do one time. And their funding is in their budget and we do one time instead of a four-year cycle. And right now, the DA's office is actually on a one-time. They are not active participants in the PC refresh for a four-year cycle.
Have they been in it previously?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Is that it for your time?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, all right. I will go to you, Mr. DA. I would just say probably it's easier if everyone gets all of their questions out before you come back, so we're not doing a back and forth. But since she has time left, you can go ahead and answer your question at this moment in time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I have the CIO explain about the PC refresh?
Good morning, Jessica Nengaro, CIO of the DA's office. All of the, so PC refresh is mainly about the hardware and to spread those expenses out over time. For us, our office has never requested Shelby County Government to pay for the hardware. If we joined the PC refresh program, we would have to request funding from this body to increase our budget so that we could. And that is because the state pays for all of the hardware in our office, for state and county employees. So we have a different source of funding for the hardware, peripherals, all of that in our office. And we have no need to ask the Shelby County Commission to fund our participation in the PC refresh program.
So what actually costs the county more if we did that? We are trying to save the county money by taking the hardware funds from the state.
Commissioner Brooks, you technically still have these 20 seconds, so if you can get your question in.
So what are you asking for right now? So I'm trying to be clear on this, so I know what I'm voting for.
This is the exact amount of cost for the county employee licenses for Microsoft 365 so that they can use Outlook, Excel, Word, all of the things that are currently in Microsoft Office, which is obsolete.
And this is a part of the whole PC refresh thing?
This is not part of the PC refresh program.
Okay, it has nothing to do with that.
Because we don't participate in it. You are correct.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Ford, you're in the queue.
Chair, there's no motion to take it down without recommendation yet, is it?
There is not.
Okay, I, I just need to ask one question, make one statement, I'm gonna make that motion after that. So you already know what I'm about to do and where I'm from, but I want to ask one thing on record, so please don't take up all my time. You're gonna fight for whatever you need to fight for, I, I get that. When did you all find out about this? Because this could have possibly been remedied when we were going through the budget process on the 23rd, when we were going down particular things. And you DA actually got one of the items that you were asking for, really two, one and a half, whatever you want to call it. Why couldn't that conversation happen then to where we're now here and we're asking for fund balance? And you just heard my fund balance soliloquy when it came to the $11 million. And I heard what other people said at the whale. Can you be very quick on that? Because I want to go ahead and move this down without a recommendation. Don't act like you, you're behind one of these microphones when you used to be here. Don't take up all my time if you don't mind, thank you.
No, I, I understand the question, I'll try to be concise. DA Steve Mulroy, at that time, at that meeting, it already was in the county IT budget. We'd been told from the beginning that it was going to be in the county IT budget. It was only a week later when you had that second meeting. I guess it was on the 30th when you had to come back. It was only then at the last minute, without us being notified, that it got taken out. I think CA Nengaro may have one very brief supplement to that.
Very brief, please.
It was in the mayor's proposed budget at a reduced amount. That was adjusted in time for the June 23rd meeting where it was approved.
Chair, well, go ahead. If I can still get my 112.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I just want to ask this question because I know you want to bring the motion, but I, but I do have a question to ask before you do the motion. So for me, then I guess my question is, if that transpired and we're now here today and it says that it doesn't meet the requirements for the permanent rules, at what point then, I guess I'm confused as to then why it wasn't submitted in enough time to meet those requirements?
So I would, this is Jessica Nengaro, I'm the Chief Administrative Officer for the DA's office. So the short answer is that Finance would not approve it. So it therefore could not go to the next step.
Commissioner Ford?
All right. I, I do get back to 112 that I had, okay. All right, so, so with that good question that was asked by you, Chair, when I make this motion to take this down without a recommendation, let me make sure I got this right. So you're saying on the 23rd, you thought X, and then on the 30th, you found out it was Y. Are there any other Zs and As and Ws also that we need to know about that have transpired from the 30th? Like, okay, do you know about any salary restrictions out of that 5.3 million that have hit your office?
This is the Chief Administrative Officer, Jessica Nengaro. We don't know what we don't know.
You don't know what you don't know.
But, but our people are being paid. And, I mean, we'll be paying attention to salary restriction, but we're not in the same position as the countywide electives who are charter officers.
And again, the deadline to sue was today. But Chair, with that being said, a lot of work was done on the 23rd. There were modifications that I asked to be reduced to writing on purpose on the 30th. And there are still questions on what was done and what wasn't done. And I'm gonna say this on record before I make my motion. More activity could have happened on the 23rd and the 30th regarding Finance. There should have been no reason, no reason, why the person that we brought in place was up in the audience, like 12 rows behind my parents. They should have been sitting at the whale while Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Mills were going down the list saying, okay, we're down to this number, we're down to this number, we're down to this number, we're down to this number. As soon as August 31st passes, we need to make sure that everything that we said we did got done and some of the things did not happen within that time period where it's like, oh, well, y'all did this. I think that's a, that's an issue. And what I don't want to happen is Finance and Administration puts what they want and not what this body passed. And with that being said, I'd like to move this item down without a recommendation.
That, Commissioner Ford made that motion, it was seconded by Commissioner Mills. Can we accept that without objection? So moved. All right, Madam Palmterren, we're at item number nine. And?
Thank you, item Chair, thank you all.
Item, item nine is a discussion item to last approximately 15 minutes. Approved, approved uses of opioid settlement fund, West Tennessee Consultant, Smart, Mr. Courtney Collier, Jennifer Torreville, and Chaney Kressinger presenting.
Commissioner Mills, I allow you to go before our presenters.
Thank you. I asked that this discussion item be placed on our agenda. I met with Mr. Jim Hart when he was doing the jail study and I'd asked him about opioid funds and he referred me to Ms. Jennifer Torreville. And with that, and Mr. Courtney, I think, got a different job change or a promotion, so good for him. So that's why he's not here today. We've asked several times about the funding, the opioid funding, the amounts, what it can be used for. And I'm hoping this helps us to set a foundation so that we can put these funds to good use and not just kind of willy-nilly spend them and not really benefit, Shelby County benefit for what the funds are supposed to be used for. So with that, I'll ask the Chair to turn it over to you all to introduce yourselves and educate us on this a little bit. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. I, Ms. Torreville, I'll hand it over to you.
Sorry about that. Jennifer Torreville, I'm the Executive Director of the Smart Initiative with the UT Institute for Public Service. So we are a sister agency to CTASS, who I think you all for, all are familiar with. This is Chaney Kressinger, she is our, serving as our West Tennessee Consultant in lieu of Courtney Collier. We are the state partner for the Tennessee Opioid Abatement Council to provide technical assistance to county government that are the recipients of the opioid settlement dollars. The funds are extremely complicated, so we were invited here today just to go over a broad overview of how these funds are intended to be spent and what will be coming into Shelby County over the remaining 15 years of these settlements. We did make you a packet to keep that has this information in it. But starting at the beginning, so Tennessee has settled with several pharmaceutical companies, distributors, manufacturers, who were involved with the unethical and over-prescribing of prescription opioid medications that caused the public health crisis that's become known as the opioid crisis, resulting in about 4,000 deaths of Tennesseans annually. You'll see on slide four that Tennessee is receiving, as of now, these are the organizations that are paying out. We'll have over a billion and a half dollars now with some new settling parties coming into the state. And the counties are recipients of two different buckets of money, which we'll explain in a minute. On slide five, you'll see that we do have nine new agencies that have settled with Tennessee. We have not factored Shelby County's allocation for these settlements into the projection amounts that you'll be looking at in a minute. This just came from the AG's office on Monday to the counties. So it is now time to sign on to these settlements. We talk about the money that comes into the state as buckets. So it's divided into different sections. So 15% of all of that 1.5 billion that will be coming into the state goes to the Tennessee General Fund at the state level. Another 15% is broken up between all 95 counties and any municipalities that signed on to the original settlement agreements. And those are known as the subdivision funds that we'll talk about in a minute. The other 70% of all the money that comes in goes directly to the Tennessee Opioid Abatement Council. And then that's broken down farther. If you'll look at the next slide, you'll see that that 70% is broken out into a bucket of 35% that goes directly to the 95 counties. Municipalities are not included, that's just the counties. The other 65% is given out statewide in community grants to any organizations that serve people with substance use disorder. So what we're going to be talking about today as it pertains to Shelby County is the 15% subdivision bucket of money and the 35% other bucket that we call the state abatement funds. So the subdivision funds, what's, what makes this even more complicated? These two buckets of money have different overseeing bodies and they have different rules that pertain to them. The subdivision funds, the allocation percentage for Shelby County will not change over the 18 years as they're coming in. Those were set in the original settlement agreements and those are permanent. These funds can be used for future remediation purposes that are listed in the Exhibit E of the original settlement agreements. Or they can be used for past remediation. So what that means is if Shelby County, prior to these settlements coming into the county, used any funds that were list, that fall into the categories listed in Exhibit E of the settlement agreements, you can use those funds to reimburse the county and then use those funds for other purposes. So let's say, for example, Shelby County has been funding part of the Drug Court or Anti-Drug Coalition or something like that. You can use this 15% to reimburse yourselves for past expenditures and then use those funds for anything else moving forward. There's no timeframe for spending that money. There is with the other buckets. So you can save this money, you can collect it for 15 years, you can spend it all at once. There's no timeline for allocating or spending. The approved remediation uses for those funds are going to be on slide 11. There are nine core strategies. And then the Exhibit E is an explanation of programs that fall within those nine categories. It is a comprehensive document that's 15 pages long and includes prevention, treatment, recovery. Anything that is on that list, these funds can be used for. On slide 13, those are your estimated payments that will be coming into Shelby County. And I want to draw your attention to a couple things. So if you'll look at the kind of lighter shade on the left, those are the payments you should have already received. I want you to note how they vary in amount. You're looking at 600,000, then 100,000, then 1.2 million, then 300,000. And those are going to vary throughout the life of these settlements. If a company files bankruptcy, your payments are going to be decreased. If another party settles, your payments are going to be increased. So these will change, but it gives you an idea when you're looking forward at funding programs, what you can expect from what we know now. I also want to point out to consider this. When you're funding recurring programs, you're only getting what's due to you as far as what's paid out. So just because it's on paper doesn't mean you're going to get it. If you've committed it to programs and your funds decrease, where's that money going to come from? So just consider those differences when you're funding recurring programs. So those are the subdivision funds. The other bucket of money coming into the county is the Abatement Trust Fund dollars. Those are overseen by the State Opioid Abatement Council, which was established by Tennessee State Legislature. These funds must be in an interest-bearing account. They must be allocated within two years and sp- They must be allocated within two years and spent within four, so there is a deadline. If that doesn't happen, you can request an extension with reason or return the funds back to the state. These funds cannot be used for past remediation. You cannot reimburse any expenditures to the county with these. These can only be used for forward future programs. They did revise a little bit the core strategies, which you'll see on slide 16, just to make them a little more concise for the county, because you do have to report back to the state which strategies you funded using these dollars. So it has to fall under those six categories. But they did also adopt the same Exhibit E, which is that comprehensive list from the original settlement documents of the programs that can be funded. So those don't change between the buckets of money. The estimated payments for Shelby County from that bucket of money, you'll see on slide 18, again, these amounts change as well. They will continue to change. And these cannot be projected out for the full 18 years of the settlements, because your allocation percentage for the county will change. Every four years for all 95 counties, they recalculate your allocation percentage based on your population, fatal and non-fatal overdoses in the county, and prescription rates per person. So they cannot project those forward. But you can see even just from the years that are on here that these payment amounts are also gonna change. And unless more parties settle, they will also decrease as well. So still considering the same factors when planning future programming. So that's a very broad overview, and we can talk about anything you want to talk about, and we're happy to answer questions. But essentially, the key takeaways are, regardless of the bucket of money, it all has to be spent on opioid remediation programs. The key differences are the overseeing body for each bucket of money. One can be used for past or future remediation, the other just future remediation. Reporting requirements are different, and the subdivision money has no timeline. So that's a very broad overview, but we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much for your presentation, Commissioner Mills. You're in the queue.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Are there examples you can give us of other counties that have used their funds in really good ways that, that might be good ideas for us? Or, I don't know how much you know of, about Shelby County or our situations, what ideas or anything, suggestions, or how we can spend these funds?
Sure. So counties, so two things. One, you know, we can talk about programs funded, and we can also talk about the way counties have set up the oversight and spending of the money. So a lot of counties have convened what they're calling an opioid settlement board. And in some counties, that's members of county commission. In others, that's members of elected officials and the community at large, first responders, people from the jail, just people across the community, multidisciplinary task force type, that will come and make recommendations back to the county commission. So we've seen it set up differently. A lot of counties are putting these funds out into community grants, so they're establishing a request for proposals. And then people in the community can, can propose to the county, hey, we would like to do this with the money. If you do that, I greatly recommend that you have them report back to you quarterly, biannually, something to make sure that these funds are being spent appropriately. If they're not spent appropriately, then it's the county that's at risk for potentially having to pay them back. So making sure, one, they're expended, they're spent within the guidelines of the settlement documents, but two, that they're positively impacting your communities. So you could do that. And then we have some counties who like to use the funds more within the county. So within the county jail, we've seen a lot of really good jail programs being started, anything from pre-trial diversion to addiction treatment while incarcerated, to re-entry support, supportive housing, you know, once you're released, transportation services, things like that. We've also seen youth programs within the schools being started. So when you think through the continuum of care for addiction, prevention, treatment, and recovery. So prevention is typically gonna be a lot of your school-based programs, and your anti-drug coalition probably does a lot of that. So the counties have been funding the anti-drug coalitions to increase what they're doing or fund the schools directly to be able to do prevention or counseling support for those high-risk. We've also seen some hospital systems and first responders start programs. When you think about people that have a non-fatal overdose, they have a high-risk situation right then. How can we best connect them to services so that doesn't happen again? So those are some things. As far as what Shelby County could do, that would take more time. We're happy to look at what you have, look at what you don't have, do a, a resource analysis, kind of a asset and gap look, and see what you're currently having, what you don't, and what might be a good use of funds. We would be happy to do that if you wanted. Some basic things that, if you don't have a drug coalition, you don't have a recovery court, things like that are always a good idea. That was a lot.
It wa, it was. It is a lot. Thank you. That's very good, very good. Thank you both.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. I, I just have a question or really a comment. I like, like what you said about in your presentation, and you just mentioned you could look at it, but more importantly, can we get like those examples of what others are doing in writing?
Sure.
Just so that we could at least have that to refer back to?
Absolutely. And we, you know, we have Chaney, just like you have a Jim Hart and a Mike Gailey, like we have people to serve your county, that's what we do. So anything, any technical assistance that would make this easier for you guys to either manage to figure out what to do, we're happy to support you in doing that. And we can start with some, some writings of what other counties are doing or processes they've set up to oversee the funds.
Thank you. We do have several commissioners that are in the queue who have questions regarding this item. Commissioner Caswell, you're next in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know, do you know about the program with the district connectors that's been done here in Shelby County with opioid fund? Have you heard of that, or have they spoke with you?
A little bit. I've heard a little bit about it. It's, I'd have to go back and, and relook at the details. I don't know the, probably don't even know the details, just a very broad overview.
Yeah. I know that primarily some, when I look at approved here, a prevention program, a lot of it is that when you talk about listening to people on the ground, because a lot of times, we make decisions from this body and we are just doing Band-Aid situations, but we're not doing what's impacting the people on the ground, because we're not listening to them. I just heard one of my colleagues today talk about how his district and I heard others in some of the meetings I've been in with suicide rate at a high rate. And we want to know what's happening out there on the ground. And so I know one of the proposals, and I put forward a resolution to that, to that factor, I can't say that the resolution in full is being implemented to, to what I saw the need is on the ground that the people are, are here to, but I know that's where it lies. If we're gonna prevent something, we got to know what's happening, not just making decisions from here. So I, I, that's really, I pretty much asked that, and just wondering, like, in, in the other counties, you gave a lot of equations of what people may be using those dollars for, but would, would government actually using the dollars to kind of put people in the community, to hear from the community, have community voices at the table when it comes to making these decisions? I was wondering if you know of any models like that across the state that's been used?
Yeah, so we have some counties that have been putting certified peer recovery specialists into different parts of the community, in the health departments, in the hospitals, with first responders, so that they are, you know, they're peers, they have experience, they can, they can provide education back to the county as well about what's going on, but they can also connect people to services. We have some counties that are conducting comprehensive needs assessments and doing key informant interviews with people that work in the sectors across the community, with people with substance use disorders, so that they can have a comprehensive look at, this is what we have, this is what we don't, this is what people think we need, and these should be our priority strategies. So collecting information to develop priority strategies is something we're seeing a lot, and that can be done in, in various different ways. And it sounds like maybe that's what you're talking about, trying to figure out not just what we can do, but what would be the best thing to do.
And two, at a district level, because every community is different.
Yes.
And so if you saying what's happening in Bartlett may not be happening in Frazier, but if we just take care of that particular situation, we're not dealing with it as a county as a whole. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Caswell. Commissioner Sugarman, you're in the queue.
Thank you so much. And I just want to state on record that we have been in line to a large degree, because we have, you know, given, for example, just involved use, 1.8 million dollars for various programs and things of that nature. And recently, when I was at NACO, they were talking about, to your point, is that it's gotta be really good use. And so we're talking about the housing, because there's a housing shortage, you know, associated with opioids and things of that nature. And so would that be a good use, for example? Because that will, for example, people have been displaced because of the opioids and things of that nature.
Yes, housing is definitely an approved use of funds and can be a very good use of funds. People typically aren't gonna enter into treatment and recovery if they're unhoused, or they're not gonna be successful if they come out of jail or out of treatment and they go back into an unhoused situation. So as long as the housing is recovery-based and not abstinent-based for all of them, but definitely recovery-based, and that's a great use of funds.
And just for the record, so far Shelby County has received approximately about 12 million dollars, is that correct?
That sounds probably about right as that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And it's dribbling in, as you stated, and it sees over a period of time, and it's gonna fluctuate. And so as far as the four-year period, I think that will not be a problem with us. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Sugarman. Are you, okay. All right, Commissioner Brooks, you're in the queue.
Thank you, ma'am. So just a couple questions in reference to, number one, does the opioid abatement council have any form of oversight for the 95 counties?
They oversee, yes. So the 95 counties have to report back to them. First, the 95 counties, before getting your payment annually, you have to sign a letter of agreement with the Tennessee Opioid Abatement Council and agree to the terms of taking ownership of the money. And then biannually, you have to report back to them how much you have allocated, how much you have spent, and what you have spent that on, and how many people were served.
Okay, so that's the oversight?
Yes.
Okay. So it, what are the, are there any consequences to mismanagement? Well, maybe mismanagement, maybe a little heavy, to being out of compliance with the spending priorities?
Yes. If they are not spent for the intent of the funds, which is outlined in settlement, the Exhibit E of the settlement documents, then the county risks having to pay those funds back to the state or to Brown Greer, who's the overseer of the subdivision funds.
Okay, so it'll just be transactional, they'll, they'll just pay it back?
Yes.
And, okay.
Yes.
It doesn't kick you out of the program, penalize you?
No.
Okay, okay, good deal. Last question. Do you have any, like, model expenditures, for lack of a better scenario, from counties who you would like to show as best practice, or something like that, in terms of expenditures?
We can pull some. That's a really hard question, and every county that we work with asks the same thing. The hard part is, these funds are just starting to go out, and so we're having to evaluate those programs that were funded to see if they're successful programs, because, you know, like we said, just because you spend it on something that it can be used for, doesn't mean it's the best thing that it can be used for. So until we have some data back, it's hard to say, yes, these are best practices. It looks like best practices on paper, but until we see the outcomes, it's hard to share that. So we can share what others have done that seem to be best practices. We don't have data yet.
So who does the evaluation? Do you have an independent third party?
We just hired somebody on our team just to do evaluation for county. She starts on Monday. Other than that, the counties, we encourage them, we'll make metric reporting templates for them to give to agencies so they can report back. We'll review them for them. But it's really up to the counties to make sure that the funds are used appropriately. We can provide some technical assistance for that.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Ford, you're in the queue.
Thank you. And I appreciate the presentation. I want to follow back up on the data collection piece, as well as something that was brought up that I believe would qualify as a, as being used for opioid remediation. Number one, is there a threshold that you would believe we should meet in your, this is your professional opinion, regarding data collection for the purposes of having this money going to opioid remediation? And I know that something was brought up previously regarding district connectors. I am not a fan of that program. I believe that the money was not being used the way that it should be. I'm already on record talking about there could possibly be Hatch Act issues. I don't care about little Hatch Act, big Hatch Act, whatever the case may be. But I know when it was first presented to us, we had this long presentation, this big PowerPoint, and only one line in that PowerPoint that was given to us by the administration dealt with opioid remediation. So my question is, should there, or is there a threshold that would justify the dollar figure that is put to the side for a particular program? For example, if that program says in one line, we're gonna discuss, we're gonna have data collection on opioid remediation, but if we go back and look at the empirical evidence and see maybe like 2% of the data deals with opioid remediation, but the other 98% deals with other things unrelated, is there a threshold? And, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I was gonna say, the threshold should be 100%. So if it's, if it's 98% funding other things beside opioid remediation, these funds should only fund the 2%.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, 100% of these funds should be used for opioid remediation.
Got you. And when you all were in the audience, I just noticed that when you all saw us deliberate on a particular item, and it happened to be the juvenile facility, and we're discussing taking 11 million dollars out of our rainy day fund. In your position, in your professional opinion, do you believe that that is an unusually large dollar figure that Shelby County would be considering for the purposes of something that could qualify as a, as an opioid remediation allocation?
So can't answer if it's a large dollar amount, because we don't know enough about that.
Sure.
But when you're thinking about funding youth juvenile programs, these funds can't be used punitively. So these couldn't fund, like, COs in the youth detention center or anything like that. These funds could only be used for youth, if you're talking about in a juvenile setting, for counseling, mental health counseling, counseling, you know, related to childhood trauma, things like that, reconnection to family upon release, skills building, things like that. It can't be used for the facilities, the staffing, or anything like that unless it's specifically related to a youth prevention program for high-risk youth.
Got you. And for the record, 100% should be used. So if I provided you some documentation and all the other stuff over the last two years, we could qualify and quantify together whether those funds were used appropriately, because I'm not always gonna go with what the administration is gonna have in front of us, because they're gonna say whatever so that they can get paid on the 15th and the last day of the month. But I appreciate you, and Commissioner Mills, I appreciate you for bringing them, because I would be glad to show you what they've done the last two years. And this is just me speaking, I don't think it qualifies as a opioid remediation allocation. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Caswell, you're in the queue.
And I will say this, I don't, I won't argue with my colleague on that. I just say if, he do get it, if you can bring that information back, it will help us in understanding where that process has gone. Thank you.
I was trying to hold the sneeze in. Thank you, Commissioner Caswell. Thank you so much, Ms. Torreville and Ms. Kressinger. Yes, okay. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your time.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys.
All right. This officially concludes Budget and Finance. We, we no longer have an add-on. It was pulled.
We will now convene Committee Ten, General Government. Madam Parliament, you're in please with your first item.
Item one is a resolution approved in the Election Notaries Public for appointment and reappointment for Shelby County, Tennessee, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks. and a reappearance for Shelby County, Tennessee, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
All right. I will move it. Get us... There's no second. Oh, Commissioner Sugarman. Thank you. That item has been moved by the chair and second, properly second. Seeing no discussion and no members in the queue, we will move to the vote. Madam Clerk, please prepare to vote. Can't hear me? Oh. Every member voted?
[inaudible]
Madam Clerk, may we have the tally, please? We have aye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Ford, and Brooks. We have three aye votes. That item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, item number two, please.
Item two is an ordinance third reading, ordinance amending the Shelby County Charter to authorize the Shelby County Board of Commissioners to appoint, hire, and attorney to act as a legal advisor to the Shelby County Board of Commissioners in furtherance of their legislative functions, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman and Commissioner Brittany Thornton.
All right, we need to get this piece properly before us. It's been moved by Commissioner Ford. Is there a second?
Her IT is not working right, she'd be at second.
Who is she? It's been moved and properly second. Is there a discussion?
Yes, I just want to encourage my colleagues to support this item. As you all know, that recently each commission received an assigned attorney without the input or consultation with the chair of the commission. And so again, we need to have an independent representative, and this would allow voters to vote on whether or not they think that we should have an independent attorney, just like, for example, the city council, and they have Alan Wade, who's an independent attorney that works for the city council. And we need that same type of representation. For example, I have three ordinances who has gone to the county attorney's office back in May, dealing with the zoning ordinances, dealing with the issue with XAI and the pollutions, et cetera. And I cannot get them reviewed in a timely fashion, so I urge my colleagues to support this item. And as you all recall, recently, without our input or consideration or anything, the administration assigned us various attorneys. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other members in the queue, we will move to the vote. Madam Clerk, please, please prepare the screen for the vote. Every member's desiring to vote?
Put me down as a yes.
Oh, man, I wish we had some decorum. Every member voted? Did you get Sugarman? No. Madam Clerk, may we have the tally? We have aye votes from Commissioners Sugarman, Mills, and Ford. We have three aye votes. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. That item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, item number three.
Item three is an ordinance third reading, joint ordinance of the Shelby County Government of the City of Memphis to establish a public-private partnership across governmental collaboration and implementation of policies to promote economic mobility through the appointment of a fiscal agent to provide strategy and oversight of project implementation. This item requires the selection of a fiscal agent who will coordinate between legislative bodies and public and private agencies, and provide updates, recommendations, technical support, and fiscal analysis, sponsored by Chairman Michael Whaley, Commissioner Erica Sugarman, and Commissioner McRight. This item was deferred in February 5, 2025, committee meeting.
All right, do we have a mover? We do need to get it properly before us.
Is yours not working, ma'am?
Mine, I got... I moved it. Does someone move it? Okay.
Can you see mine?
No, I don't. Okay, just call it, just say mover?
I moved.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Mills, second by Whaley. Okay, we'll move to Chairman Whaley's in the queue.
All right, yep, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to move to defer this to... We don't have this scheduled yet, but I think we can do it this way, the first committee meeting in November. No, we won't have that scheduled till September, so I think we can say the first committee in November. Yeah, okay.
It's been moved and properly seconded, this item be moved to the first committee meeting in November. My screen is not working, so I don't know what's going on.
Let me locate the rule for when the system isn't working, so I can read that into the rec... Just a moment, please. So per your rules, when the electronic agenda system is not operational...
Sign out.
The chair shall recognize commissioners in the order in which the chair observes commissioners seeking recognition. Wait a minute, that's only one part of the rule. Oh, so when the electronic agenda system is not operational, immediately prior to the vote, in any committee meeting, the chair shall put the question in this form. All those commissioners in favor of the action shall signify by saying aye. All those commissioners who are opposed shall signify by saying nay. So if it's working, you don't have to do that.
Okay, we're working now. So you already have the vote on that, Evelyn?
I can't take myself... See if you're able to pull the voting screen up.
She already done it. Okay, Madam Parliamentarian, item number four, please.
Item four is a resolution appointing Tim Netherton to the Shelby County Beer Board for an initial four-year term, sponsored by Commissioner McRight and Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr.
Okay.
Second.
That item has been moved by... Was this an old screen? Was it Mills?
Commissioner Sugarman.
Sugarman, and second by Mills. Is...
It's going again.
Okay, it's going again. Is Mr. Netherton here?
No.
You trying to say something? I don't... My screen's not...
May I be recognized?
Yes, you're recognized.
This candidate was not available today, but he can come on Monday. And so I was going to request that we send this down without recommendation, so he could be heard on Monday.
So move.
I'll make that motion.
It's been motioned properly second, that the item be sent down without recommendation in order for the candidate to appear. Let's see, it was moved by Wright, and second by Ford, okay. Can we do that without objection? So move. Madam Parliamentarian, item number five.
Item five is a resolution approving the expenditure of funds to the United States Postal Service in an amount not to exceed $1 million for Shelby County Government Support Services for fiscal year 2026, ending June 30, 2026. This item requires expenditure of fiscal year 2026 general funds in an amount not to exceed $1 million, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
Okay, my screen's not working. It's been moved by Commissioner Sugarman. You got it? Man is she on the vote screen? Seeing no discussion, we will move to the vote. Oh, I'm... Are you here to say something, Cliff?
I will be happy to speak to the motion if you desire. If you don't, and you want to go straight to the vote, that will not hurt my feelings.
Is there a desire for Cliff Norville to speak on this $1 million?
Cliff Norville Public Works, our Support Services Department provides mail services for the whole county, and we have postage machines in the Support Services offices. And each year, we have to buy postage. We are purchasing this from... This is a sole source agreement. We are buying the postage from USPS, and so this is in our budget, and we recommend approval.
I can't tell anyone else in the queue. Seeing no further discussion? We will take this to the vote, Madam Clerk. Yeah.
Since the system is not operational, we need the committee chair to put the question. All those commissioners in favor of the action shall signify by saying aye. All those commissioners who are opposed shall signify by saying nay. And then the clerk shall call the roll for the yays and nays on the item.
Okay, thank you. You heard the parliamentarian. Commissioner Sugarman?
Aye.
Commissioner Ford?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
Aye.
Commissioner Whaley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bibbs?
Aye.
Commissioner Wright?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks, aye. We have aye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with a favorable recommendation. That's seven aye votes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, item number six.
Item six is a resolution to rename the Youth and Family Resource Center, the A.C. Warden Youth and Family Resource Center, sponsored by Chairman Michael Whaley, Commissioner Shante K. Avant, Commissioner David C. Bradford Jr., Commissioner McRight, Commissioner Brandon Morrison, Commissioner Henry E. Brooks, and Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs, Commissioner Erica Sugarman, and Commissioner Mikel M. Lowry.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Sugarman, and second by Commissioner Ford. And we do have, I see, members here for a presentation. So what we'll do is, let you give your name, each one of you, and an address and your comments. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Kyla Rice, Communication Specialist for the Shelby County Mayor's Office. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. It's a sunny day here in Shelby County, and let me tell you why. One, everyone looks so nice today. And two, I am here to respectfully request your approval to rename the Youth and Family Resource Center to the A.C. Warden Youth and Family Resource Center, in honor of a man whose leadership, compassion, and vision have deeply impacted the lives of countless families throughout Shelby County, the incomparable Mayor A.C. Warden. Chairwoman Brooks, if you don't mind, I would love to give some extended remarks about Mayor Warden, if that's fine? Yes, thank you. Mayor A.C. Warden's legacy is rooted in service. As the first African-American elected as Shelby County Mayor in 2002, he championed initiatives that prioritize public safety, education, economic equity, and most notably, youth and families. In fact, one initiative in particular that he spearheaded, My Brother's Keeper, brought numerous agencies together to give second chances to justice-centered youth, which perfectly describes the work the Youth and Family Resource Center is doing to this day. Mayor Warden's first name is A.C. If those two letters stood for anything, it would be action and commitment. Renaming the Youth and Family Resource Center in his honor would be a full circle moment for Shelby County, reflecting on Mayor Warden's honorable actions and commitment as a dedicated leader. It would acknowledge that the work happening within those walls today would not exist without the groundwork Mayor Warden laid years ago. I am sitting here with Andre Warden, one of Mayor Warden's sons, and Andrew Warden, one of Mayor Warden's grandsons. If it pleases this body, Andre and Andrew would both like to make remarks.
All right, thank you so much.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Andrew Worton. Y'all ask for an address?
That's a question. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, who's son are you? Andre? Andres?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. When I think about what it means to have an impact on the youth in our community, I believe there's no better man to do that than my grandfather. He dedicated his life to public service, but I see it every day, and now what he does and work, and his work with youth villages. But he's always had a positive impact on the youth. And I remember this quote that I think I presented in an eighth grade, kind of a speech to my school, and he said, "It's not the... It's not the bleachers, it's not the athletes, it's the teachers, because the youth are truly the next generation of Memphis and Shelby County." So I just believe my grandfather, there's no better man. He is an example for me, and was an example for my dad, and the values that he instilled in us just truly go without. So thank you, and I hope we can name this in honor of a great man.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm just so impressed. Mr. Warden?
I think this is on. Madam Chairwoman and Mr. Chair, and to this committee and to this body of county commissioners, it's good to be here. Andre Worton, 532 West Clover Drive. This young man, Commissioner Brooks, is my son, I'm proud to say that. And thank you to the mayor's office. I see C.L. Collins behind me, and of course, to Ms. Rice for keeping us on schedule and to make sure that everything was good, decent, and in order. So thank you to the mayor and his team in his absence. I think you only gave us, what, about three minutes? It's hard to speak about my dad in three minutes, but I would try my best. First, this, as Andrew indicated, I can think of no better honor than to have my father's name on a building that is coined the Youth and Family Resource Center. Is that right? There's a scripture, I think it's in Esther, and it talks about for such a time as this. And we're going through some times right now in our country, and even in Shelby County and the City of Memphis. But my dad stands for a lot. I think, Ms. Rice, it was you that indicated, what was the... What did you coin the term for? Action?
Action and commitment.
Action and commitment. I love it. I love the acronym. Back when, you know, when my dad was in campaigning mode, in campaigning days, he talked about turning on the AC. Some folks, you know, in politics, he understood it eventually, he understood it that in politics you can't please everybody. But it wasn't about that. It was about the commitment, and it was about the Constitution, so... But it's the summer now, so I have to keep up with his slogan that he reminded folks, "We're going to turn on the AC. We're going to turn on the AC for this building, hopefully with the county commissions' approval." We're gonna turn on the AC for this building, hopefully with the county commission's approval." So, I say that with all due respect. So, although there was an acronym, my dad stood for a lot, and I would like to borrow from your use of the acronym and, and say he's about the children. So, kind of just thinking back, I had to talk to my mom. I'm not gonna talk to my dad about, "Hey, Dad, tell me about your resume," because he would probably spend about an hour and a half talking about that in his days, humble days in Lebanon, Tennessee. But y'all will remember books from birth. My dad was very passionate about books from birth, and that's where it all starts, right? With literacy and having our children know how to read and have their parents engage with the children and teach them how to read. So, about putting ki-, uh, books in kids' hands at an early age, even before they've reached one years old, having people read to them. If it wasn't a parent, a grandparent, a godmama, as they say, or a teacher, someone was reading to these children. Well, we like to even say before they're born, reading to them. The mother reading to her child, her son or her daughter, when the child is in the womb. That's when things start to click. That's when the foundation starts to develop. My dad stood for that. You remember when he moved on down the city, the first mayor, obviously, to hold accounting? And we're not saying this in any braggadocious way. We're just saying this as a sense of pride, because we sit here proud. I'm proud of this young man, because he's my offspring, and I look forward to him building upon whatever I did and his grandfather did and his great-grandfather did and doing even more extraordinary things for this community. So, you know, he moved from books from birth to, I'm gonna bounce around a little bit. Y'all remember one in Memphis, when he talked about from Box Town to Germantown and all the communities, it was about empowerment and engagement and making people's lives better. I'm going somewhere, I promise, Madam Chairwoman. And my, my mother reminded me, and my dad has often talked about this, but again, he just talked about some of the legislation as we talk about cases, and he talked about domestic violence and some of the work he did with the Order of, Orders of Protection Law and working with the legislature, the craft legislation that was well-intended, that would protect families, protect women and men in those instances when they would suffer domestic violence. This was about family and youth, because we know that families are impacted by domestic violence. So, he was very instrumental in that. Y'all may remember, even before that, my dad served as the Legal Services Director, one of the first directors for that program here in Memphis. He moved down the street to our building here, down the road here, 201 Poplar, where he served as our chief public defender for many, many years. I want to borrow something that y'all are very familiar with, and at some point, you may say, "Mr. Warden, your time is running up." I don't see a timer, so pardon me, Madam Chairwoman. I would like to just keep talking a little longer about my dad. Y'all familiar with the Declaration of Rights under the Tennessee Constitution? And where that starts, and if I read from Section 1, it talks about that all, and all power is inherent in the people. All of you all, I remember being sworn in. My dad was sworn in when he was the city mayor, the county mayor. But all power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness, for the advancement those ends they have at all times, and an alienable and indefensible right to alter, reform, or abolish government in such manner as they think appropriate. But then it skips down in Section 2, and it talks about that government being instituted for the common benefit. We can go on and on. These are the things that my dad stood for. We know in the courtroom, he fought against unreasonable searches and seizures. For the folks who are familiar with the Fourth Amendment, that's the equivalent, and that's the Tennessee equivalent of the Fourth Amendment. But these are the kind of things he was doing with the jail, 201 Poplar, when it was overcrowded back in the days when he served as chief public defender, working to improve, and y'all are still doing that today, working to improve the conditions at the facility down the street. These are the things that he's concerned about, because we know at any given day, a family member, a friend, or some colleague may end up at 201 Poplar even for a day, and they deserve decent conditions. And you all are dealing with and grappling with those challenges right now. These are the things he stood for back, and I remember even before Andrew's age, when I would, he would drop me off. He'd take the time to drop me off, but he had to be down at those jail overcrowding meetings that he was working to improve the conditions in the jail. So, this is about improving families and improving the lives of our community. I'd be remiss if I didn't just offer a personal note, really what this is all about is a common touch. My dad was about, as this, the Constitution talks about the common benefit, well, he had the common touch. And what better way to honor that legacy of service than to have this building dawn his name? We are pleased, I speak on behalf of my immediate family, but on behalf of my entire family and all of the constituents that saw fit to elect my father twice, three times, I guess, yeah, two, three, four, I'm not sure, three and a half, whatever the number, it's not about that. It's about what went behind it and people entrusted him, and hopefully, he did a little something to make Memphis and Shelby County a better place. So, we are honored to make this request, and we're happy to support this request by the mayor's office, and we hope that this matter and this resolution will be approved by this commission. We thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We have two members in the queue. Yes, Commissioner Bibbs, did you have your hand up? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I wholeheartedly support this recommendation and very excited to be one of the sponsors for this. I very much appreciate the commitment to service that your father has, and he is still in service. I've had to go to him on a couple other community initiatives that he has done, so I'm just excited to still be in partnership with him. So, this to me is definitely something that we can do to celebrate him and all of the work he's done for Shelby County. My other, I guess, comment is just to, because I don't recall now, Andre, now, is that a, wanna just verify your son, where did he attend college?
Thank you for, Commissioner, for asking that question. He is a proud student at Hampton University.
Thank you very much, sir. I just wanted to be able to say that on the record. Just wanted to be able to acknowledge the Hampton University.
Absolutely, and I think you've got some kinship to that university. So, Commissioner Bibbs, if I might, Madam Chairwoman, if I might, and not, again, to belabor any points on this, you brought up something I did not touch on, and that is my dad's work and his passion for still the youth, and he's still active with the Youth Villages Program, Memphis Allies, and I'm sure a number of other initiatives that are near and dear to this body. So, I do want, our foundation, this is not a shameless plug at all, Madam Chairwoman, we have a foundation to this day that we continue to put money in, and then money goes out to students of all ages through the college age. When they have gaps, they're missing technology, or they're missing books, we just, they just awarded some grants as we can. So, that's the kind of work that he's continued to do. So, thank you for acknowledging that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, I'm also, wanted to say a word of thanks for including me on this resolution. Very well deserved. So, Mayor Warton and I did not cross paths politically. He served in Shelby County and in Memphis before I was anywhere close to the scene, and certainly, we come from different walks of life and different parties as well, and so I never expected to end up being today where I get to see him about once a week working with Youth, with Youth Villages and the Memphis Allies Initiative, and we rely on him so much for his wisdom and his expertise. So, I've seen him more as a role of a counselor and someone who can provide wisdom, and so, but I also see him, you know, we've taken trips to Nashville to visit some legislators together, and I see that, that he is welcomed as a rock star in those settings, and just so well-known certainly in Shelby County, but throughout the state and regionally as well. I know he has made a lot of contacts among mayors and other elected officials regionally, but he is just all, someone we can always go to for good advice, and when we're scrambling and when, when we're worried about something, he will always come back with just a very solid, grounded, informed word of wisdom. And how fitting is this, to have a place for young people to, when they're seeking good advice, that they could go to the A.C. Warden Center and receive some good counsel? So, thank you all for sharing him with us and with the county, and this is just so very fitting. So, thank you so much.
All right. My screen is not working. Are there any, Commissioner Sugarman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, our families were way back, way back. I know my brother graduated from law school, it was your, your family firm that allowed him to work there, gave him the opportunity. And I know you, you and my son went to Boy Scouts together and things of that nature. We go way back. But your whole family, I mean, you come from a very prominent family, and you lead a legacy, not only your father, and you're starting your legacy, and it goes on and on and on. And so, I think it is so important that we remember, or remember our history, because now when people see, you know, the A.C. Warden Family Resource Center, they'll say, "Well, who is that guy?" You know, and they'll go back and they'll look at the history. And that's why it's so important that we name our monuments, as well as our facilities, after prominent individuals, because that is part of our history, you know, the history of Shelby County. So, I want to thank you and your family, and most importantly, your dad, for all the work he's done in our community. So, thank you so much.
Okay. Any other members in the queue? So, I will take this opportunity to say I agree with everything that's been said. I know Mr. Warton, Andre personally, and I think I met you, young man, when you must have been a little bitty boy. I just can't believe how time flies. Could I believe you were in college? But I'm so, I'm just so impressed by the Warton family, all of the things that you all have accomplished, and how you serve this community, just your general goodwill, your general goodwill, and how you approach solving problems in our community. And what a better way. I mean, this could not come at a better time. Thank you so much, because we just finished talking about funding the Youth Education and Justice Center. So, I was, with all of these glowing accolades, knowing it's going to be named for someone that we all love and admire, I'm sure that the funding that this body will be asked to contribute will be forthcoming gladly, this is, because it's going to be named after someone we all have just sit here and talked about on the record, how much we admire. So, with that, I just know we will properly fund the Youth Education and Justice Center. Thank you all so much. Did you all want to say one more thing before we take this vote? All right. Good deal. Madam Clerk, let's take the vote. My screen isn't working, so say when. Ready? Commissioner Clay Bibbs?
Aye.
Sugarman? Aye. Mills?
Aye.
Ford? Aye. Wright?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Whaley?
Aye.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Clay Bibbs, Sugarman, Mills, Ford, Wright, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have seven aye votes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Thank you all so much. And Andrew, it was so nice to see you again, as well as Andre. Give my love to the family. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, Madam Parliamentarian, item number seven.
Item seven is a resolution to approve and set the salary of the Chair of the Shelby County Board of Commissioners for the 2025 through 2026 term, sponsored by Chairman Michael Whaley.
Okay. My screen is out. Let me see. Hold on. It's been moved by Commissioner Mills, second by Commissioner Ford. Um, I don't know what happened. It's properly before us. I don't know if, are you on the screen?
It does not work.
Okay. Commissioner Ford.
Chair, would there be an issue to read seven through 10 in the record and have all of them go down without a recommendation? If not, I'd like to make that as a motion.
Okay. It's been moved and properly seconded, moved by Mills. The items seven through 10 be read and to the record and sent down without recommendation. Can we do that without objection? So move.
Item eight is a resolution electing Commissioner Blank as Chair of the Board of County Commissioners of Shelby County, Tennessee, for a term of one year pursuant to Article 2, Section 2.08 of the Shelby County Charter, sponsored by Chairman Michael Whaley. Item nine is a resolution electing Commissioner Blank as Chair pro tempore of the Board of County Commissioners of Shelby County, Tennessee, for a term of one year pursuant to Article 2, Section 2.08 of the Shelby County Charter, sponsored by Chair pro tempore Shante K. Avant. Item 10 is a resolution receiving and filing the notice of vacancy created by the retire-
Just, just-
Oh, this, not through nine?
Yeah, seven through nine.
Seven. Okay.
That's fine.
All right. Thank you, Madam Parliamentarian. All right. Item number 10. Madam Parliamentarian.
So, we send them down without?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Item 10 is a resolution receiving and filing the notice of vacancy created by the retirement of the Honorable Phyllis B. Gardner, General Sessions Civil Court Judge for Division 2, effective September 1, 2025, setting August 8, 2025, as the application deadline, setting August 20, 2025, as the date to interview candidates, and August 25, 2025, as the date for appointing an interim judge, authorizing the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners to publish notice of appointment, and requesting the Shelby County Sheriff's Office to conduct a background check on all candidates for said vacancy, sponsored by Chairman Michael Whaley.
All right. It's been moved and, moved by Commissioner Mills, second by Chairman Whaley. Properly. Seeing, no, I can't. Are there any members that want to say anything? Any members in the queue? Okay. Commissioner Whaley.
All right. So, just one note on this, is that, see, the, the judge is retiring effective the end of August or September 1st, but we are not necessarily required to have the person we appoint start right on September 1st, that the judges can cover for a period of time if the person needs to be onboarded, because there is some sort of administrative work that has to be done, so just something to keep in mind. That's all.
All right. Okay. Are there any other members in the queue? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, we'll move to the vote. Commissioner Mills?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Whaley?
Aye.
We have aye votes from Commissioners- Thank you. We have aye votes from Commissioners Mills, Ford, Wright, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have five aye votes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with a favorable recommendation, and that concludes General Government. We will now move to Core City Neighborhoods and Housing Committee 11. Madam Parliamentarian, please read the first item.
Item 1 is an ordinance second reading, ordinance to amend the Shelby County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 16, Article 4, to provide for the establishment of an administrative fee to be imposed by the Shelby County Land Bank for the private lot grass maintenance program, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
All right. This item has been moved by Commissioner Mills, and I'll, second by Commissioner Whaley. Okay. Anyone in the queue? Seeing none, we do have a presentation from Ms. Sykeswood.
Thank you. Esther Sykeswood, Land Bank Administrator. As some of y'all may or may not know, the county has a hazardous vegetation ordinance. It's in effect in the unincorporated areas of the county. By definition, if there's tall weeds or, or grass, we go in and we cut it. We then place a lean on it. This fee will help cover the administrative overhead on these leans. Currently, the overhead's been covered by county funds, general funds.
Okay. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, curious, how many properties there are, I guess annually, or what?
Not, well, we cite probably 200 or 300 a summer, however, not that many go to leans, because when we post the notice, they'll usually cut it, because we give them 30 days to cut, or 14 days to cut after we post. So most of them self-medicate.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Anyone else in the queue? Have to raise your hand and scream. Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, we'll move to the vote, please. Commissioner Mills?
Aye.
Ford? Wright? Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Whaley?
Aye.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Mills, Wright, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have four aye votes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, item number two, please.
Item 2 is a resolution approving the sale of 17 county-owned delinquent tax parcels acquired by Shelby County from various Shelby County tax sales to identified purchasers at various prices collectively totaling $119,537.50 pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated Section 67-5-2507, and authorizing the Shelby County Mayor to execute quitclaim deed, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
It's been moved by Commissioner Mills and seconded by Commissioner Whaley. Ms. Sykeswood?
Esther Sykeswood, Land Bank Administrator. The back tax recovery on this is negative $136,209.56. There are six out-of-town purchasers, and they are buying seven lots.
I do have a question on that. Are those out-of-town purchasers, are those lots in the same district? Are they contiguous? And/or?
Esther Sykeswood, Land Bank Administrator. Looking at Exhibit B, we have two lots in District 7, four lots in District 8, and one lot in District 9.
Is it same buyer or different buyers?
They are, one buyer is buying two of them, and the rest are all different.
Okay. All right. Anybody else in the queue? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, may we move to the vote. Commissioner Mills?
Aye.
Wright? Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Whaley?
Aye.
We have aye votes from Commissioners Mills, Wright, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have four aye votes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with a favorable recommendation, and this concludes Core City Neighborhoods and Housing, and this committee is adjourned.